Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:05. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
I will. Tim Hale, are you on the phone? Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee.
Here.
Robert Yunt.
Here.
Moki Two.
Here.
Dimitri Fahnoff.
Over here.
Ron Bernier.
Here, on the phone.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there anything the members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Yes, Assemblyperson Two, go ahead, sir.
AM 23-083.
Okay, anything else anyone would like to pull? Okay, are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, and the agenda is approved as presented. So you all stand, please. Senator Stolz, can we have you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the minutes of preceding meetings, and there is no minutes that are being presented. The next item is reports and correspondence, agency reports. Let's see, I don't see anybody from any of the cities. Do we have a report from the school district? Don't see anybody either. And Todd's not gonna be here this evening, he's told us at lunchtime. And I don't believe there's been a joint Assembly and School Board Committee meetings. You didn't have any during the month of July. Are there any public relations reports? Okay, seeing none, then, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll be very brief. Consider this to save the date, so the Borough will be hosting our annual emergency preparedness expo at the Menard Center on September 30th. So I know that's about two months away, but just to give you a heads up, that'll be from 10 to 3:00 in the afternoon. It's usually a very well-attended event, lots of great vendors, community members, and folks that show up to help us to continue to help folks share that awareness around being prepared for various emergencies. So just wanted to put that on the record and your calendar. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any questions about the manager's report? Okay, Mr. Attorney, report?
No report tonight, let's get to it and go ahead.
The Clerk's report is in your red folder with the upcoming meeting schedule, pertinent election dates, and next Tuesday's agenda.
Okay, any questions to the Clerk? No. The next item is citizens and other correspondence. There's a number of items there. Is there any comments on the citizens and other correspondence? Okay, seeing none, they are then presented. Madam Clerk?
I am 23-166, reporting conclusion of contract number 22-141B with Western Construction and Equipment for the Aurora Hills Drive Hickory Street project. I am 23-167, reporting conclusion of contract number 22-133B with Western Construction and Equipment for the total contract amount of $685,754.38 for the Viking Road, Arley Road, Lost Valley Road improvements project. I am 23-168, reporting conclusion of contract 22-123B with Valley General Construction for a total contract amount of $809,129.88 for the East Wolverine Avenue, East Porcupine Avenue, and East Beaver Avenue project. I am 23-169, reporting conclusion of contract 22-114B with Tuttka LLC for a total contract amount of $645,084.05 for the Point McKenzie area roads earthquake repairs project. I am 23-170, informing the Assembly of the right-of-way acquisition of Borough-owned land for a temporary construction easement valued at $800 by the Alaska State Department of Transportation and Public Facilities for Seward, Meridian Parkway Reconstruction Phase II. I am 23-171, informing the Assembly of the manager entering into an all-cash purchase agreement with a leasee to purchase by application the Alaska Division of Lands Lease #050688 for the fee simple estate of Borough-owned lands. I am 23-172, informing the Assembly of a grand amendment to be presented to the Borough Manager for signature for the Houston Middle School Improvement Project. And I am 23-174, informing the Assembly of the manager entering into a land lease agreement for a five-year term and allow leasee the option to purchase the fee simple estate of the land.
Are there any comments on the IMs? Okay, hearing none, then they are presented. The next item on our agenda is persons to be heard. We do not have any persons to be heard. The next item is public hearing.
Ordinance 23-061, an ordinance re-appropriating $839,075 from the government Peak Recreation Area Parking Lot Project to Gateway Visitor Center Project in the state and federal grant match account. Accompanying Resolution 23-066, a resolution rescoping $250,000 from the government Peak Recreation Area Parking Lot Project for use on the J. Nolfi Park Project and approving scopes of work and budgets for the Gateway Visitor Center Project in the state and federal grant match account. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have staff report.
Through the Mayor to the Assembly, Cheyenne Heindl, Finance Director. Before you is a reappropriation of money we saved where we utilized the Healthy and Equitable Communities Grant for GPRA instead of the funding sources that we previously had identified. At this point, we are recommending that we reappropriate part of this to the J. Nolfi Park. It was part of the capital projects, capital improvement plan that Planning put together for you earlier. We also are looking to reappropriate $156,030 to the Gateway Visitor Center to complete the match for the EDA grant, to complete that facility. And finally, the remaining amount, $683,045, will be placed in the federal, non-federal grant match that could potentially be used for other projects such as road bonds or transportation projects.
Okay, questions to staff? Okay, thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have a sign? We do not have a sign-up sheet. Anyone that would like to address the Assembly on these two items? And we would like the testimony just to pertain to these two items. The ordinance 23-061 and the resolution 23-066. Anyone that would like to speak to the Assembly on either this ordinance or this resolution? Caleb, do we have anybody online? We do not. Last chance, anyone? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-061 and resolution 23-066.
Discussion. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the legislation passes. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 23-067, an ordinance amending MSB 2840 to clarify and update the mayor's appointment powers. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Staff report, Mr. Attorney, thank you.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the Assembly. As the title says, this is to clarify and update the mayor's appointment powers for boards and commissions. In 1973, this Borough Code was enacted that said that the mayor makes appointments to all boards and commissions except for members of the Boarded Adjustment and Assembly Members serving on the Board of Equalization. And that's because under state law, for smaller municipalities, the Assembly or the City Council actually serve as the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And in boroughs, the Assembly can serve as the Board of Equalization. We are a large enough borough that sometime in the past, those other two boards were formed, and the mayor does appoint, and the Assembly does confirm. However, this code section was never updated, and the mayor found it and said, hey, this is in conflict with other parts of the code. And so I explained why and how it came. And so this code section was enacted in 1973. There was a small update in 1979. It was re-cotified in 1994, but basically hasn't been touched in almost 50 years. So we're updating it to reflect the fact that the mayor makes all appointments to boards and commissions subject to confirmation by the Assembly. If we ever go back to the, you know, quote-unquote, "old" way of doing it, where the Assembly sits as the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and the Board of Equalization, we could amend both parts of code to do that.
Okay, thank you. Questions of staff? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. No sign-up sheet, okay. Anyone is welcome to address the Assembly on ordinance 23-067. Caleb, do we have anybody online? No. One last chance. Okay, I'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-067.
Discussion. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the legislation passes.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 23-70, an ordinance accepting and appropriating $311,052 from the Alaska State Department of Health and Social Services for the provision of critically needed essential health and social services. With accompanying Resolution 23-77, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for the Human Services Community Matching Grant Program and allocating funding to nonprofit sub-grantees for the provision of critically needed essential health and social services. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Staff report, please.
Through the Assembly to, or through the Mayor to the Assembly, Cheyenne Heindl, Finance Director. Before you is an accepted appropriate of Health and Human Services grant. It also involves a match of $133,308, which you previously approved in the fiscal year '23 budget for a total project and to be allocated to the various recipients of $444,360.
Questions to staff? Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing then on ordinance 23-070 and resolution 23-077. Is there anyone that would like to address the Assembly on either this ordinance or resolution? Do we have anybody online? We do not. Any last chance? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-070 and resolution 23-077.
Discussion by the Assembly. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection, the legislation passes. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 23-072, an ordinance amending portions of Title 25 elections. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Staff report?
That would be me, Madam Mayor.
All ready?
This legislation is coming forward to change three areas of code. One of them is to allow nicknames on the ballot again with guidelines. The guidelines are basically the candidate has to prove that they are known by that nickname by having at least five people, registered voters, sign a petition that that's the name they're known by. And also, that nickname can extend past 15 characters. The other one is changing to, changes to electioneering. Right now, our Borough Code states that you can't electioneer, meaning wear a button, have a bumper sticker within 200 feet of the building, even for future elections. Due to a matter of law, the Borough cannot do that. It has to be something that's on the ballot for that election. And then the other one was missed when we were changing the code to go to hand count. Our review board no longer really exists. We don't have, they're the ones that would count the ballots. So right now, we're just taking out review board, and the people that are gonna be hand-counting are the hand-count officials in the canvas board. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Questions to staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 23-072. Anyone is welcome to address the Assembly on this ordinance. Have anybody online, sir? We do not. Anyone in the audience? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-072. If I may, I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
So the nickname can't be more than 15 characters, or the entire name and nickname? 15, I just...
Through the Mayor to Assemblymember Yunt, the actual nickname.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because 15 seems pretty small if you had to get it all in there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, Stephanie, Assemblyperson Nowers.
I was just wondering if you had a nickname that's longer than 15?
No, I, but if my whole name, my first name and last name, almost take up 15. That's why I was concerned, so...
There's some wrestling nicknames that are pretty... Um, sorry, I do have an amendment to this. So I would move to amend ordinance serial number 23-072 to insert a new section, MSB 25.30.020C, which would read, "No partisan or nonpartisan political activity or any other activity which in the judgment of the Borough Clerk may directly or indirectly interfere with the orderly conduct of the election shall be permitted in, on, or within 200 feet of any entrance to the building used as a polling or vote counting place. Political activity in this section includes, without limitation, any activity intended to persuade a person to vote for or against any candidate or measure or to desist from voting." And if I can speak to it briefly?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so the reason I brought this amendment was I really want to preserve the sanctity of polling places. I believe people go there to vote, and there's kind of a 200-foot buffer where you finally get a break from all the political campaigning. I understood we had a Supreme Court ruling that said folks could wear things for future elections. If they want to wear a t-shirt, a hat, et cetera. This would not restrict their rights, so it's in keeping with the Supreme Court ruling. And I did talk to the clerk and attorney about this. Basically, this is just to keep, if somebody's really being obnoxious, harassing people, trying to hand materials to them, otherwise disrupting the election, it just gives the clerk a power she already has, but put it in writing, to ask that person to please let people come in and exercise their rote right to vote. So that's the gist of this. And like I said, I did consult with the attorney and the clerk on it to make sure it passed legal muster and was something I felt comfortable with.
Discussion on the amendment. Any objection to the amendment?
I wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
To a clerk, can you explain to us what that, how that would give you more or less benefit? And is this needed?
Through the Mayor to Assemblymember Fahnoff. A lot of these things we do anyways. It does not hurt to have it in code. It's nice to be able to point to somebody or something in our code if somebody questions us. So I think this would be a nice thing to have in code.
It's a practice that has been practiced over the years, yeah. Further discussion? Do you have your head? Oh, okay. I don't, yes, Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
I'm really bad with distances. How far from this very place is 200 feet, like out there? And the reason that I ask that is if you have, are in an election, you've got stuff plastered all over your car, how close can you park to, how far from there could you park?
That, that has been changed now by the Supreme Court decision, right? The things on the car, right? Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, it would only, if it only pertains to this election, if it pertains to an upcoming election, it's completely fine.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm just thinking, if you're running for election and you're going to vote for yourself, and it's like, I don't even know where 200 feet is from here. Would there be signs? Would there be something told?
We do, if, through the, or through the Mayor to Assemblymember McKee, the election officials have a tape to be able to measure 200 feet.
Okay.
And they are supposed to be checking when they have time to see if there's anything like that out there.
Further discussion on the amendment, yes. Deputy Mayor?
It's that American flag out there about from where we are. And Sumner, I remember, had his sign on his truck multiple times, and he couldn't, during that time of year, he wouldn't even park anywhere near this building, because he didn't want, so he'd park a couple blocks away and walk or whatever. But it, this is a good thing. People, people need to have their freedom of space when they go to vote. They don't need to be getting harassed, so I'm, great amendment by Stephanie, so...
Further discussion on the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? Not, then the amendment passes. So now you have before you ordinance 23-072 as amended. Discussion on the amended ordinance? Any objection to the amended ordinance? Seeing none, and the ordinance is amended, has passed. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 23-073, an ordinance accepting and appropriating 2018 November Cook Inlet earthquake disaster monies from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Alaska State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management with accompanying Resolution 23-079, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for 2018 November Cook Inlet earthquake disaster relief monies. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Staff, go ahead, lady.
Through the Mayor to the Assembly, Cheyenne Heindl, Finance Director. Before you is an accepted appropriate for $1,339,451.92 for money related to the 2018 earthquake. This is money that has already, or costs that have already been incurred by the Borough and is reimbursing us for not only administrative costs, but also road bridges and any other damages that we had.
Any questions to staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the, thank you. Open the public hearing on ordinance 23-073 and resolution 23-079. Anyone that would like to address the Assembly on either this ordinance or resolution? Do we have anybody online, sir? No. One last chance? Okay, seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-073 and resolution 23-079.
Discussion by the Assembly. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, the legislation passes.
Ordinance 23-075, an ordinance accepting and appropriating 2022 January Matsu Windstorm Disaster Relief Funds in the amount of $14,025 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and $46.75 from the Alaska State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management with accompanying Resolution 23-80, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for Brett Memorial Ice Locker Room Building Roof Repairs caused by the 2022 January Matsu Windstorm's disaster. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Staff, please, thank you.
Through the Mayor to the Assembly, Cheyenne Heindl, Finance Director. Before you is an accepted appropriate for 2022 wind disaster funds to reimburse us for the repair of the Brett Memorial roof over the locker rooms.
Questions to staff? Okay, thank you. So go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 23-075 and resolution 23-080. Anyone that would like to address either one of these, the ordinance or the resolution? Okay, seeing no one, do we have, we do not have anybody online? Last chance. Okay, I'll close public hearing. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-075 and resolution 23-080.
Discussion. Any objection? Legislation passes.
Ordinance 23-076, an ordinance accepting and appropriating $188,866.80 from a judgment in the Borough's favor for the community cleanup and abatement of junk and trash issues with accompanying Resolution 23-084, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for community cleanup and abatement of junk and trash issues. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
And who do we, Nick? Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, staff, please.
So, Mayor, Members of the Assembly, this is the result of one of our junk and trash injunction enforcement cases. And this is the first time in the past, probably in the history of the Borough, that we've actually collected a judgment this big. So in 2018, we sued a defendant for junk and trash on three pretty valuable pieces of property. He didn't show up, he didn't answer the complaint, he just didn't, he just ignored it. So we won because he didn't come fight. And we won a judgment of this amount, $188,866.80. When he still didn't clean up, we asked the court to hold him in contempt, which the court did in 2018, and assessed him $5 a day for not following the court order, which of course, in light of a judgment that big, that's not that much. In 2020, we asked the court to hold him in contempt again, and the court said $50 a day, up to $5,000 total. Again, didn't do anything to get him to comply with the court's order. So Shannon Baudelaire in my office, this was her case, applied for and was given a writ of execution. A writ of execution is where you can seize someone's assets to satisfy your judgment. One of the, one of the hurdles in a lot of these cases is we can't often seize people's property and sell it to satisfy our judgment, because there are other judgments ahead of us in line. And you can't execute someone's property unless it satisfies your judge, everyone above you, and then you as well. Anyway, we were heading towards sale, and what happened was, at the last minute, he hired an attorney, asked us to delay the sale while he tried for a private sale. The private sale was successful, the new owner has committed to clean up the property, but nonetheless, he paid the judgment that he owed us. That's this money here. Our recommendation is to put it in as what's here tonight, put it into a project account so that it just doesn't go into the general fund, and that that project account, the scope of work and budget here tonight, is to use it for future cleanup efforts, not this property, but other properties. We have a meeting next week to talk about all this. I know that Planning has been working a lot, Development Services, in terms of working with communities. There's the, Assemblymember Fahnoff made the amendment during the budget for the vehicle cleanup. So there's a lot of needs and programs coming online, and this money can be used for that, because that's where it came from. So we thought that might be an appropriate use.
Okay, questions to staff? Okay, thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 23-076 and resolution 23-084. Anyone that would like to address the assembly on either this ordinance or resolution? Do we have anybody online, sir? No? One last chance for anybody here? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor.
I move to adopt ordinance 23-076 and resolution 23-084, if I may speak to it.
Yes, you may.
This is a really sad ordinance. This is actually pretty heartbreaking. So I'm glad to see the money's going to get used well, but it's kind of lame that it came to that situation. So obviously, they didn't plan to do anything about it. You know, they didn't, they didn't care and they ignored it. But it is a pretty heartbreaking story. But I'm glad to see that it's going to get used for, for the future betterment of the borough, so.
Further discussion on either the ordinance or resolution? Is there any objection to the ordinance and resolution passing? Seeing and hearing none, the legislation passes. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 23-77, an ordinance relating to the construction additions, improvements, betterments, repair, reconstruction, or acquisition of public roads and pathways and facilities related thereto in the Magneska City Borough, together with all necessary equipment and transportation facilities, including improving school access and the acquisition of lands or rights in lands in connection therewith, and a debt of the borough authorizing the issuance of area-wide general obligation bonds of the borough in an amount not to exceed the sum of $65,085,710 to finance the cost in whole or in part of such public roads, facilities, and lands, and submitting the proposition to the voters at the November 7, 2023 regular borough election. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Okay, staff report? Yep, there we go.
Try again. Mayor, Manager, Member Assembly, Tom Adams, Public Works Director. Give us a few seconds. I was unaware that we had to make reservations to plug in our computers for this presentation.
Do you want us to switch over?
I think the question is, or the answer is yes. Okay, I'll let the smart people take over from there. While they're doing that, I'll occupy some dead space here. So I'm pretty pleased, it's a culmination of some effort on the Public Works Department to bring forward our TIP 23 package. For those that are unaware of the acronym, it's our Transportation Infrastructure Program. It really seeks to build our traffic and transportation network. Many have known this program to be the bond package in the past, you know, the past decade or so, using mechanisms for that, for us to get our projects done. I'm going to read a little excerpt out of our executive summary in the packet that's been provided to you. I think it's well-written. It really just sets the foundation for our discussion tonight. So the Magneska City Borough has experienced substantial sustained growth for the last decade resulting in increased traffic volumes congestion and safety issues on the existing road network. The MSB Assembly recognized the need to address these issues and directed the borough manager to prepare a 2023 Transportation System Package for Assembly Consideration through resolution 22-100 on October 4, 2022. The MSB Transportation Infrastructure Program 2023 is a package of projects that aims to reduce traffic congestion, support economic development, improve connectivity, enhance pedestrian and vehicle safety, increase reliability, and provide transportation choices for residents. Many of these projects are identified in the MSB's Long Range Transportation Plan, the Official Highway and Streets Plan, and Safe Routes to Schools. So that, that fairly effectively sets up the next part of the conversation. So through a process of seeking nominations from various commissions, boards, this assembly, residents, over the past several months, we've collected projects from the public and vetted them. You know, what you have before you tonight is the vetted list, basically reduced from Public Works, or reduced list of nine projects from Public Works. Altogether, right now, that package is standing on an estimated value of about $64 million, something that we'll talk about a little bit more tonight. I just want to point out that we also have generated through that process, somewhere on the order of another 45 projects for your consideration, that we would, that we have put some time into developing some form of a scope, description, and cost estimate to help guide you. And if you were to consider other projects that you wanted to add, delete, or otherwise amend, the Public Works proposed package. As you can well imagine, our needs across this borough substantial for transportation perspective, not only from new roads, but to maintain those roads we already have built. Of the 45-plus projects that might be alternatives to select from, there's almost $280 million worth of constructed value that is showing of projects that we have identified that need some form of attention. I also want to point out, you know, like I referred to earlier, I mean, this is not a new program. This is an ongoing program, one that I hope with the manager and this assembly's support to, to make sure that we try to address this in an orderly manner over the next couple of years, not haphazardly and come at it from a, you know, every few-year perspective when we think at the time is to, right to address certain problems. These problems persist, they will persist, and to really attack them in an orderly manner, I think is going to take some forethought and some intent. You know, that being said, we are ongoing with our TIP 21 package. Just regurgitate the fact that we are a $61 million package that was approved in November of 2022. So that is an ongoing process. We also have nearly $31 million in our Community Transportation Program projects. There's four projects that DOT is ongoing right now. We have in the process, we've nominated several other projects under the CTP, two under the CTP and two under the TAPS, Transportation Alternatives. So those right now are, have been nominated. They've been scored at the DOT level. The DOT's Evaluation Committee has been delayed a bit. We're hearing that it'll be September. But there's another nearly $35 million worth of projects being considered there. I guess I say all that because there's over $400, $400 million worth of transportation-related projects that can be considered, that have some form of need to be addressed. That doesn't even identify, it doesn't seem to suggest that we have every project identified either. So the magnitude of the problem's pretty significant. We know we can't attack it all in one year. We can't attack it all in a couple of years, but we certainly should continue to try to attack it, try to chip away at it. So that being said, I have Daniel here. He's going to run the keyboard. You know, we do have nine projects that we have recommended from Public Works. We'd be more than happy to go into detail on each of those projects if the assembly thought it was necessary. We're also here to help guide through any kind of discussion from the alternative projects list or any other projects that you might have brought for discussion this evening. So that being said, ready to address the?
Would this has all been presented at previous assembly meetings, right? This hasn't been?
Madam Mayor, so at our last assembly meeting, under the manager's comments, I did make an introduction of the ordinance.
Right.
And presented the information that you do have. It's the same information?
Okay, so let me just ask, are we ready to go ahead and do the public hearing? Yeah, are we ready to do the public hearing? Okay. Oh, sure.
Yeah, so through the mayor to the assembly, the idea is we'll have this up. This is what's in the packet that was introduced last week. What we're prepared for is to adjust this on the fly with amendments so that you know what the total value changes are, what projects are in and out, and you can visually see that as, after the public hearing, as we get to discussing potential amendments. So that's what we're set up for. So this is the same projects, values, names that were presented in the packet last, or last regular meeting.
And if the computer fails, I have my HP, so I'm ready to go old school on you.
Okay, all righty.
I do want to point out, while, while I have the opportunity, there is an amendment that I did put forward to the clerk just to recognize.
We'll wait until the appropriate time.
So I'll need that to be addressed at some point.
Yeah, it will. We will do that after we close the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing now on ordinance 23-077. Is there anyone that would like to? We do not have a sign-up sheet? No? Anyone that would like to address this ordinance? Do we have anybody online, Caleb? We do not? One last chance then, or anybody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor.
I move to adopt ordinance 23-077.
Okay. I think you have. I'm memus. Do you want to deal with yours first?
Yeah, I've got two. One, I'll move now and then my other amendment needs to be the final one of the evening, or final one of the.
Okay.
First Amendment will read as, "I move to amend ordinance 23-077 by correcting names of the following listed projects to be consistent with their respective TIP 23 designations and have staff update each project description in the IM to match as follows. Delete Burma Road Reconstruction Phase 1 Ashire Avenue to Moore Road and replace Burma Road Reconstruction Ashire Avenue to Moore Road. Delete King Arthur Drive Phase 1 Parks Highway to No Name Hill Drive and replace with King Arthur Drive Reconstruction Parks Highway to No Name Drive. Delete Yoder Road Construction MP 0-4 and replace with Yoder Road Construction Talkeetna Spur to South Fork Road."
Okay. So we do have our First Amendment then, which consists of three different items. Discussion on that First Amendment.
It was brought forth by staff. I'm not really this smart. Yeah. I think it's, it's all good clerical stuff.
Yeah. Is there any objection to the First Amendment consisting of those three items? Hearing no objection, then Amendment Number One has passed. Let's see, Assemblyperson Nowers or Two, which one do you, you want to go first? Okay. Assemblyperson Two, go ahead. And Mr. Attorney, if I could have you turn off your mic. Unless you wanted to talk, I'll let you talk. Okay. All right, go ahead.
I move to amend ordinance 23-077 by adding the following project to the, to the list of projects and to have staff add the project description to the IM. Jolly Creek Drainage Improvement in the amount of 1,953.
Okay.
And then I have another amendment.
Should we do them one at a time? Let's do those one at a time, sir. Thank you. Discussion, did you want to say anything about those before and see if anybody else has discussion? Go ahead, sir.
So, okay, so the Jolly Creek Drainage is a really needed project in the Big Lake area. Approximately 80 homes get flooded yearly. The road just gets flooded occasionally. Subdivisions are flooded. It affects wells and septics, and this has been a project that's been needed for decades. And so I'd like to see that get fixed for the community.
Okay. Discussion on this amendment? I'm sorry, were you finished? Did I interrupt you?
No, but thank you for doing that though, because now I remembered something else.
Okay.
We, the Big Lake RSA has put money down already to have this engineered, and there's been engineering in the past. I think it was just like, say, '82 or something, there was other engineering done. So it's been in the works for a while, but we just need to finish it and get, get this drainage fixed.
Discussion on this amendment number two. Any objection to amendment number two? Okay, seeing and hearing none, then amendment number two passes. So your amendment number three, sir?
Okay, so I move to amend ordinance 23-077 by adding the following project to the project list and have staff add the project description to the IM. West Lakes Boulevard, Big Lake Trail Number One, separated crossing in the amount of 2,002,700.
Do you want to speak to it, sir?
Sure. So I think everybody knows that Big Lake is a big place that draws a lot of snow machines and whatnot. We have a trail system out there and West Lakes Boulevard is a very heavy-traveled road. And so what has to happen on Trail One is they literally have to go up, lakes up on the road, cross the road, and come back down and go. And this is, this is dangerous and we'd like to get that fixed. And then another thing is when they go and do the grooming, they actually have to stop on that, on that road, which is West Lakes Boulevard, the groomer does, and go way back miles and then come back around West Lakes and go back down to Trail One again and go. So this would allow two things. This would allow the groomer just to keep on going through West Lakes and then it would stop the, it would stop all that potential for a car hit with the snow machines and it 'd allow the snow machines to go through that same tunnel. So it's a tunnel through a road is what it is.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on amendment number three. Any objection to amendment number three? Seeing and hearing none, then amendment number three is adopted. Is that all of that that you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Assemblyperson Nowers, did you want to do yours?
I do. Thank you. I move to amend ordinance 23-077 by adding the following project to the project list and have staff add the project description to the IM. Inner Outer Springer Loop Pathway in the amount of 2,385,000. And I'll briefly speak to it, like the previous projects, which I really appreciate, looking at increasing safety and improving things. This was a project that was actually originally on the TIP 21 list and it is a TAP project with the state. So hopefully that funding will come through. Unfortunately, we just didn't get the answer in time. And so to preserve the ability to complete this, looking to add this and, and have that option, it completes a connection between the Glen Highway over to Job Corps for a pathway that runs around Palmer. It's an area that's really well-used by the residents of the area. It's part of a Monday running event that goes throughout the year and it's right across from the fairgrounds, too. So it's a safety issue with all the, the traffic there. Total cost that this would add would be like a dollar 30 on a $100,000 home. So like I said, hopefully the TAP money will come through, but this just gets it on the list and gives us the ability to, to move forward with it if that funding doesn't come through.
Discussion on amendment number four. Objection to amendment number four passing. Seeing and hearing none, amendment number four is being approved. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Last one. I move to amend ordinance 23-077 by adding the following projects for pavement rehabilitation and to have staff add the project description to the IM. Tate Drive between Bogart and Selden in the amount of 548,000. Earl Drive and Eek Drive from Bogart Road to Finger Lake Elementary in the amount of 493,000. And Gershmel Loop from Fireweed Road to Fireweed Road in the amount of 647,000. And, you know, I put these forward because just looking at really well-used roads that could use some help and is a relatively small amount of money. Again, this is like a dollar, a little more than a dollar and change on a $100,000 property. Tate Drive, if you're not familiar with it, is that cut-through that lots of people are using to get over to the schools off of Bogart. And then Earl Drive and Eek Drive are down to Finger Lake Elementary. So there's all the traffic in there as well as the subdivisions. And Gershmel is over off the, the Parks Highway leads up to a bunch of subdivisions like Cloud Rest, et cetera, over by the, anyways, if you're not familiar with that, just off the Parks, about two miles up the Parks from the Glen Parks interchange.
Off of Fireweed.
Off of, off of.
That's, that is, yeah, the Frontage.
The Frontage Road that runs there. That's why the connection is from Fireweed to Fireweed Road. So again, just trying to help on roads that are, are really well-used and in need of some assistance in terms of improving them.
Okay. Discussion on amendment number five. Any objection to amendment number five? Hearing, yes, do you have? Oh, okay, hearing no objection, then amendment number five has been adopted. Is there further amendments? Yes, sir.
I move to amend ordinance 23-077 by adding the following project to the project list and to have staff add the project description to IM. School site traffic and safety. Um, school site traffic and safety improvements to, um, Finger Lake Elementary for, uh, one million four hundred, um, eighty-four thousand, and it's, um, letter L on the map that we previously had issued.
Okay, sure.
Did you, I s- I apologize, Assemblymember Raffanoff, did you, okay, thank you.
Okay, did you want to say anything in the discussion?
There's more homes building in that, and that's, um, but, uh, been brought up is there's a lot of traffic that blocks all the way from the school through, uh, the two roads and into the, uh, Selden. So I think it's just another one of those safety thing, and there's a school, and it would benefit the community.
Okay, I think that's to Bogart, I don't think that's to Selden. Yeah, to Bogart, yeah, to Bogart. Discussion on amendment number six. Any objection to amendment number six? Okay, and then amendment number six passes. Any further amendments by the Assembly? Yes, Assemblyperson Nowers?
Before we get to the last amendment, I just, um, I don't have a specific amendment, but I wanted to bring up something for discussion and see if, if the Assembly members are interested in it. The one project that stood out to me was Burma Road. Um, and I think it's kind of, uh, it's a really expensive project, it's like a, a fifth of the total cost. Um, I feel like Burma Road is kind of an artifact from our plans for it from years ago, that it was going to be the main connection down to the port. Now we're looking at, um, the, the rail line being that main connection down. I know there's not a lot of traffic on Burma, so, um, maybe to start, just a question to staff, like, um, we've got eleven million there, could we look at, um, high-grading the work on Burma Road so we improve the things that need to be improved, but maybe not look at it in terms of improving it to be a major arterial, more of a residential? So I just, um, I, I'm not opposed to go into eleven million, but I'm kind of curious to hear what maybe some of our options are, and then, um, if the, you know, Assembly members feel like we want to go somewhere, maybe we can look at amendment.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, do you want staff to answer that first, or do you have a question first?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead with staff, and then I'll ask my question.
Staff, you understood the question?
Yes, through the mayor, the Assemblymember Nowers. So, you know, I, I think you have, you are correct in that the, uh, that the attention given to Burma Road for the past thirty years, let's say, with respect to improving the corridor and its use is, is related to the absence of any other north-south corridors that link Big Lake, for instance, with the Port McKenzie area. You know, we have evidence going all the way back to nineteen eighty-five of, you know, taking a look at that, that corridor and linking that community to, to Point Mac. Uh, there's been, you know, variations of conversations in that intervening time between now and then, uh, taking, you know, the concerns of the Big Lake community, there is an impact study that was done. There was, you know, the roundabout, for instance, at the Y, was formerly the Y, um, as a reaction to this. So the, the roundabout was constructed. Um, a- and there was improvements to, to South Big Lake Road, you know, all in anticipation of potentially Burma Road being improved, and then being a corridor that brought more traffic through and into the Big Lake community. Now, obviously, you know, very much in its infancy is the discussion about PMRE conversion from rail to road. And I would agree that if the PMRE became the project that I'd like to see it to be, that it would be a replacement north-south corridor that could take arterial traffic from the port area to Parks Highway, and, and relieve that burden off of Burma Road and off of the traffic going through Big Lake. Um, but there's still a need to improve Burma Road itself. I mean, it's very deficient in its horizontal alignment, there are some very narrow segments of roadway, there are some safety considerations, uh, with blind corners. It's a maintenance headache both during the summer and during the winter, winter. So to, to say that there isn't some form of attention due to Burma Road would be misleading, because I think, you know, we'd take any kind of, any form of money that was, that this Assembly approved, uh, to be directed at Burma Road, and we'd find a way to spend it. You know, you, you would recognize that this, this Burma Road corridor, uh, it, it's been, there's preliminary, preliminary design, there's right-of-way that's been acquired for, for much of the alignment, not all. And so, you know, from our perspective, you know, a decision of some sort should be made as to what does the borough want to do about Burma Road? Do we want to continue having this conversation for the next twenty, thirty years? Or do we want to start, you know, chipping away at the conversations that have been had for the past twenty? Could it be something less of an arterial, because it was previously planned as an arterial corridor, and so therefore the, the burden of that cost is shown in our, in our estimate? But if, if PMRE did really come to fruition, you know, there is some merit to maybe reclassifying this to be a, a minor collector, you know, to serve the, the residences that are out there. There's some merit to, you know, going and recognizing that as time goes by, there's more development out there. Right-of-way will become more expensive. And, you know, for the phase that we're looking at now from Ayrshire North, you know, there's not as much of development as there might be in the next ten years. So if the desire is to improve Burma Road, I think, uh, you know, the decision to do so is one that should be discussed.
Anybody have further questions, the staff? Assemblyperson McKee?
When you're making comparisons between the Burma Road extension and, I mean, um, improvement and all these other ones, where does it kind of like fall in line with most urgent? Because I've been on Burma Road several times when we were talking about the dog musher, um, pass through thing. And, um, one time in the entire time, we met one car, another time we met four cars. So it's like there was, there's just almost like no traffic. How many residents are out there that would, could justify eleven million and so forth?
Through the mayor, Assemblymember McKee, you know, I, I don't know that I can equate to you how many residents out there. I can tell you how many vehicles were counted the last time the, the corridor had a vehicle count done, which was in two thousand and ten, so it's a little dated, but it was anywhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty vehicles on an average daily traffic.
Hmm, twenty-ten, you say?
I'm sorry?
You said twenty-ten?
Twenty-ten was the last time that particular.
I wonder what it is now, because I'm telling you, you could, uh, have a dinner, a meal in the middle of the road and never get to see anybody. So I'm, I'm just wondering, if we're in the great scheme of things, what, what the urgency is of this project with that kind of price tag compared to some other places? And then if you do the, if the PMRE were to go, that's pie in the sky, because now we're, it has been for all the years, now we're talking about a road extension instead of a rail extension. So I'm just thinking, I'd like to take more time and wait, see how this one shakes out compared to the others, because to me, it doesn't seem to, I'm not an engineer, obviously, but I've been out there a lot of times. I didn't see it. I mean, the road's a mess, yes.
So through the mayor, to, to answer your question, Assemblymember McKee, when we, when we started this process earlier this year, you got to recognize that the discussion for PMRE conversion to a road was not in play. So to answer your question about priorities, this Burma Road project was the highest-rated project out of our cartier, the matrix that we use and apply to all project, this was the highest-rated project for a number of reasons. Um, the, the availability of existing plan, uh, design plans in a preliminary stage gave it some extra value. You know, the fact that we had acquired some right-of-way increased that value. The fact that at the time there wasn't, it was intended to be, uh, a link between, uh, community and, and industry gave it some value. Now, if we went back and applied that same criteria now with respect to, you know, forecasting that whether, anticipating the PMRE maybe supplanting some of that value, you know, the priority might not be number one, but it would still rate fairly high as far as a project to move forward.
And what would be your number one reason for that rating that high, still?
Uh, there's a number of criteria that go in, went into that matrix for scoring. Uh, the things I just said, like, uh, the fact that we have preliminary plans, that we have right-of-way, that it is a link between community and industry. Um, there, there is another several, you know, components of our scoring that a committee went through and scored each and every one of these projects.
Thanks.
Deputy Mayor, you had a comment before we got staff reports, so.
Couple, couple of quick questions, so, one for Tom and one for Cheyenne. Um, if, if this item moves forward unamended, what's the lineal footage of road that will be improved out there? What's the length?
Uh, are you speaking to Burma Road specifically?
Yes, sir.
This is where I, these like.
If we fully fund the eleven point five eight five million, what's the length of the improvement?
We have that info, we just pulled it out, it's in the packet of info, so these narratives that we provided for each project. So this is the actual, uh, recommended projects. Where's it at? So two point three miles is as proposed in our tip, uh, Public Works Recommended Projects.
Thank you. The next question is, if this package moves forward after the previous six amendments, what's our new total?
That's why we brought this presentation, so we can show you right there. We've been, as these amendments have actually passed, we've been updating that Cheyenne color there. So right now it was without her number.
Yeah.
We and I are coming up with twenty thousand dollar difference between your number and.
So it's roughly seventy-four million dollars, can be validated by the checklist.
I'm, I'm going to roll that up. It's seventy-five, okay. Um. Okay, so it's five million dollars a mile. But we, yeah, we're around it, sorry, five million a mile for that one. And I, I know that road's in terrible shape, so I, I mean, that's higher than I thought it would be. I was really hoping this would be like a four or five milli- mile improvement, but, uh, um, with us moving to the, moving to the other, uh, road or pathway, hopefully, um, you know, maybe it's not quite as big as a need as it was previous. But a- anyway, I guess, I, I would probably be open to a reduction. I don't want to see the whole thing go away, I do think that, uh, a- and again, I, do you guys have any studies on if we reduced it from eleven million to ten or eight or five? Do you have an idea of, would you actually do the whole thing? Or if you only had five million to play with, would it really change your strategy to the point where?
So through the mayor, to Assemblymember Young, so, again, the graphic, uh, for Burma, so right now, the project that's being proposed is not the entire corridor, you know, we just couldn't afford all it wants to be of.
I assume this is the worst.
So what we've done is we, I mean, with respect to design, we always look at logical terminology. You know, somewhere you gotta tie back in the existing roadway that makes sense. And, uh, the definition of this particular project, um, I think it's called Moore Road. Let me get to my pages here. So, I mean, if we were to look at reducing, it's Moore Road. If we were to look at reducing, like, let's say, Ayrshire Road, and, and, you know, let's just round number right now, it's nine point five is what we have, let's say ten million dollars. If your thoughts were to reduce it in half, obviously, you know, relative size, you're going to get about half the project. And so looking at where that might be, there's another road, um, Joy Road, I think is about halfway. Um, that does get us, I talked to, uh, Brad Swartz earlier. Brad was involved in some of the planning information that's previously been done in Burma. You know, there is a stretch of that segment right in there that we do not have the right-of-way. And as I alluded to earlier, there's no better time than the present to go try to tackle acquiring that right-of-way, because if we wait another ten years, who knows what kind of development goes there and what kind of costs we're talking about? So, you know, perhaps five million dollars gets in there, we, you know, but we'd not prepare the estimate with the thought of reducing it to that point, but that's relative size.
I'm.
Give me five million dollars, I'll find a five million dollar project.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm open to any ideas that other Assemblymembers have. I just wanted to ask the question so we'd all be, you know, educated on it. Um, it's not my district, I, I do know it's, there are very dangerous parts of that road, and it definitely needs some attention, and it has for a long time, like you said. So I'm open to leaving it like it is, I'm open to a reduction. It, uh, I'm going to have an amendment here soon that I think will take some pressure off the taxpayers' backs anyways, but, uh, so I, I just wanted to ask some good clarifying questions, I appreciate your help, thank you.
Assemblyperson Nowers, did you have a comment?
Um, sure, I'll go ahead and make an amendment to reduce the amount of the Burma Road Reconstruction Phase One, Ayrshire Avenue to Moore Road from eleven million five hundred and eighty-five thousand to five million, and I can speak to it briefly. So, I'm not set on five million, um, but, and I think the, the reality is we could have passed, we could pass eleven million for this project and then adjust it, you know, as these projects come forward. Because this just gives us the power to bond for them, it doesn't mean we have to go forward with the project. But I feel like, um, you know, a road that's getting a hundred a day, and like Inkstrom's getting three thousand a day, I would hate for staff to have direction from us that we prioritize this over that. So, um, I guess I'm hearing from staff that five million would allow you to address some of the more serious issues, or at least get started on the more serious issues, and I, um, I also would hate to end up with two duplicate roads side by side to create that, that course. I guess, um, those are all the things I'm thinking about, and, and it's, um, so, um, just amend to, to five million, and then, you know, it just allows us to prioritize these other projects with the money we have, and then we can come back to Burma Road, too, so. I'm just throwing out five million, if somebody has a different number that I like to throw out, I'm okay with that, too, but, five million.
Okay, so we have amendment number six that has been moved to reduce the amount to five million. So discussion on that amendment. Uh-huh, Assemblyperson Two, go ahead.
Uh, most of Burma's in the Big Lake area, and I probably travel it three times a week. And, uh, I think Burma's, i- is dangerous. Someone's going to get hurt on that road, and I'm not going to support reducing the money, but I would, I would, uh, think about maybe the borough just going out there and making the road safe, taking eleven million dollars and from one end to the other end, making it a safe road to travel. I can try to explain to you what that road is, it's ninety-degree corners in some spots. It's maybe a lane-wide, uh, definitely blind. Uh, so it's, for the weak of heart of driving, they, they avoid that road. But to get from Big Lake to Point Mac, that's the straight route to go. So even as bad as that road is, I jump in my old beat-up pickup, so I don't care, you know, it just beats the hell out of it. But that's what I go out down that road in. So I won't support you in reducing it, but I would definitely consider talking about doing, uh, maybe not a highway, but a safe road.
Further discussion on the amendment, Deputy Mayor?
Question for staff, um, if the amended amount, or if the amount moved forward at eleven five eight five, would you have some ability to reduce the scope in that area, but increase scope in, like, the full length? Like, uh, Assemblymember Two mentioned, so I know this was to do that, two point three miles, like, a hundred percent, right? Um, knowing that we may not, we may get another path out of there eventually, it looks like we're going to, and then knowing that maybe the goal would be to not make this two point three miles, like, you know, up to, say, uh, like, a hundred percent stand, you know what I'm trying to say, but improve the whole thing, is that something you think you could do?
Through the mayor, to Assemblymember Young, I mean, that's what we do, right? We take on the challenge of finding a project and fitting it within the budget that we're given. So, you know, the simple answer to you is yes, if, if that is the intent or the will of the body that, uh, we expand, or we modify the description to take off the limitation of the, the beginning and end of projects, and we take a look at the entire Burma Road.
And, and that's where I was.
Clarify that, but we, yes, we will, we will look to maximize the value of the money, the funds, for this particular project. The one thing I would ask for consideration is, um, there, you know, on the north end coming off Susina Parkway, you have Purinton, which is a fire break, which is actually, you know, developing as a roadway, and then you got the other portion of Burma Road, is where should our focus be? Is it to stay on Burma Road proper? Or is it to bring the southern portion of Burma Road and connect it to Purinton, uh, so that that is the link between Susina Parkway and Ayrshire?
I got a question for the attorney, and, and this was the direction I was headed in, if, I wanted to ask that. But, uh, if we decided to leave the amount, eleven five eight five, could I or should I amend the description so that it gives staff freedom to operate anywhere on Burma Road?
Absolutely, I was actually going to bring that up if, if you didn't.
So it'd still leave the money in the district and available to be used, but it would be, sorry.
For, for Burma Road. Now, one of the issues that, um, that happens in the development of the road bond package is you have to have a usable capital improvement upon completion. So one of the reasons this was done in phases is, if you look at the, uh, like in the eye.
So one of the reasons this was done in phases is if you look at the, like in the IM, it has the project description. Preliminary engineering, 340 grand. You can do the preliminary engineering for the part that you're then going to, in the end, have completed. What you can't do is spend bond money and do a plan for the whole road and then only construct part of it. Because at the end, then the part that's not constructed is ineligible for bond funds. Because you have to have, under the constitution of Alaska, a capital project in the end, a usable capital project. So, you know, it's broken out in the IM. You can, you certainly can say, you know, move an amendment to just, to change the project description to, you know, upgrades and betterments to Burma Road. Staff is really gonna have to manage making sure that they don't over design and then under construct. Because that delta causes a problem, a constitutional problem.
Can I? Yes, sir. Okay, so real quick through these, to the assembly then, and I'm gonna make a suggestion and see if I can get the attorney and the finance director to nod north and south. It sounds like maybe what we could do with the amendment to the description is take the emphasis off of this idea of it being a major collector or an arterial and create latitude for staff to go out, do the assessments and almost turn it into a safety improvement project. With the be, the beginning and end of project between Wesu sitting in Ayrshire. And then let, leave us the latitude to have staff go out there and determine where the best improvements would be and what would be the best utilization of the funding that's allocated to the project. I don't see financier, attorney doing the east-west yet. Come on, guys, I'm looking for a north-south.
So when you say allow staff to do it, one of the other things is that these, the projects are supposed to contribute to the overall transportation system of the borough. And if the traffic counts support it, I mean, I understand when, when you say, you know, hey, there are other roads with other uses and heavier uses. But a lot of these classifications are simply the traffic counts, jumping if I get that wrong, are simply the traffic count. So if the traffic counts support a major arterial, a major collector or minor arterial, that's already what it is. To say, well, we're just gonna treat it as a local service road, then, then it, you wouldn't put it on the transportation systems bonds. You would leave it to the RSA to improve.
Well, you asked me to correct you, so I will. So functional classifications aren't, are not totally reliant on ADT. They really are how they function, you know? The classic graphic of a local road feeds into a larger roadway, i.e. a collector that eventually leads into an arterial. They're functionally classified and they're not always based on ADT. Although ADT does have some bearing there. It's just because you reach 200 ADT doesn't necessarily mean you're turned into a collector or an arterial.
And so what is Burma Road now?
Function classified in our OS and HP, it's a minor arterial.
Currently?
Currently, with 100 ADT.
Okay. And then if it's, if it's a minor arterial, then yes, what you would do is amend the project scope and just say betterments and improvements to Ayrshire Road and pick a mile point beginning and end. Because remember, this all supports the bond package. So this is information to be provided to the voters as well. They need to know what they're voting on when they see a line item on a ballot proposition.
Okay.
Yeah, and so just remind, like when we set out, when Public Works was given a task to go develop this package, to, just to remind folks, because I think it's important for the public to understand, like this was a project that's been discussed for decades as a major north-south arterial. And what we're saying now with the Port McKenzie Rail Extension Corridor, potentially using that as a road, I would argue that's a better use. Because if you're looking to connect, connect residents to industry, like taking it through downtown Big Lake, although there's no downtown center per se, but it's probably not the best option. And that's what Burma Road would leave you with. So understanding that when Public Works set out, did the scoring and all that stuff, this was without the knowledge of, without knowing that we have this embankment that could be used for the purposes that Burma was originally envisioned to provide. But I think it makes sense as a safety improvement. And then you allow the engineers to go out, make the assessments and determine where lanes may need to be widened or where turns may need to be, you know, not 90 degrees or where you have, you know, alignments that are incorrect that don't provide you the line of sight you want. But, and that's a long stretch. So I think that kind of latitude would be, would yield the most benefit in the end.
The amendment on the floor is just to the 5 million, so I need to bring you back to just discussing that figure. Assemblyperson hours.
So I have a question for staff. I guess my concern is that we know that we might pass a $70 million package. The prices are gonna escalate and then we're gonna have to choose between projects that are on the approved list. So are you, and I'm, for the record, much more comfortable with the safety idea. But what I, I'm concerned about is that we'll say, oh, we've gotta spend 11 million on Burma, which has a lot of work in it already, so we might accelerate that amount and then end up not having the funding for Shaw Elementary or King Arthur. Like, is there a way for, for staff to prioritize so we don't, you know, as, as prices escalate on these projects that, and we only have 70 million, that we don't cut off roads that are, have a lot more traffic? I mean, that's my, my concern with putting 11 million into Burma with 100 a day. If we, I just don't, like, is there a way, if we pass 11 million for Burma, that you can still get direction from the assembly? It says, don't let this keep you from doing the other projects that have a lot more traffic on. There's a way to prioritize that.
So through the mayor to Assemblymember now, so a couple, couple layers to answer that question. First and foremost is the suggestion about the cost estimates and, you know, the escalation cost. And yet something very real we're living with right now with tip 21. So I recognize the intent of your comment. I could tell you that we've taken great effort in tip 23 and preparing estimates that are real, based on the information we have at hand, with fairly significant contingencies appropriate for a planning level estimate. So is there any guarantee that we won't fall victim to the same? No, absolutely not. I mean, I do know that it's not just the Matsu Borough. I mean, cost escalations over the past few years have been exorbitant. So, so that being said, you know, we, we feel like at this moment, we've prepared pretty good estimates. Now, as far as prioritizing, you know, there's a couple of parts of that as well. You know, Nick made mention, the borough attorney made mention that, you know, with bonding, there's a capital asset requirement. Now, there's, there's kind of the handcuffs that, you know, I think is worth understanding too. If we don't bond, we don't have those handcuffs. So if the intent is to fund these projects without the benefit of a bond, you know, either after the propositions passed or otherwise, if they're not funded with the bond money, not included bond, you don't have that same requirement. We could break these down into pieces and parts and I think the attorney would support me on that. So that's something to consider as well as we move forward these projects. And then the other part of this is as our team manages these projects going forward, we're always cognizant of what cost estimates are generated by our consultants or our internal team at the time the project advances. We're, we're tracking that consistently. And, you know, when decisions need to be made, we're documenting those decisions or we're bringing them forward to the manager's office to disseminate to the assembly so they have an opportunity to recognize that this project might be getting a little bit bigger or a little bit less prioritized than maybe you had anticipated on this evening right here. So, you know, there, there's plenty of opportunity to, to put the bridle in and pull back the reins or to hit the gas. I mean, there, there's a lot of opportunities for these projects. But, you know, we're gonna advance every project that gets forwarded and approved on our list to the point that it makes sense to continue to do so.
So just one quick follow-up and speaking to the amendment. The, so if, so if we don't reduce the amount to 5 million, are you able to, is there something this body would need to provide to the manager, to staff to say, do not let this project take away from these other projects that are higher priority? Even if they're, it's more ready to go?
Through the mayor, again, you know, what we do when, when these projects become live, you know, they go, they come from you. They go and they get passed by the voters and ultimately, Cheyenne says I have money to spend. You know, we just start tracking, we start developing the projects, you know? Some of them get in, we start getting consultants, you know, for, I'll just use Burma for instance. You know, we'll, we'll understand that this project is being somewhat re-scoped to look at the entire corridor and to maximum, you know, to focus on safety improvements that also benefit the traveling public as far as the width of roadways and things like that. We'll start to assess what that, we'll get an assessment as to where our, our dollars are best spent to achieve that. Before we go spend the remaining 10, 12 million dollars, we'll understand what those costs look like. And that's a decision point. Do we want to go forward from here? You know, because the, you know, consulting contract might be a couple hundred grand, you know? So we'll have, we'll have an opportunity to reengage and decide, you know, whether or not to, to use the balance of the 11 or 12 million dollars to move forward to construction or to, or to assign it to another project that has higher priority.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and withdraw my amendment. I'm okay with moving forward with 11 million with the understanding that this body has a checkpoint to say, you know, this, this project is, we've got other projects, you know, they come back to us with 6 million, 8 million. We can say, you know what, let's scope that down and make sure we got the funding for the school safety improvements sort of thing. So I'm gonna withdraw.
Is there objection by the assembly for her to withdraw her amendment? Hearing no objection, then the amendment has been withdrawn. Okay, further discussion then on the ordinance as amended. Deputy Mayor.
I would like to bring an amendment in regard to this one. But before I do, I just wanna say, we definitely do have that ability to make adjustments with staff as we move forward. I think, you know, we, we had some of the projects from tip 21 that are already moving forward, right? So it's kinda, it's, there's always stuff in play there that if adjustments need to be made, then, then that can happen. But I would like to make the amendment. I appreciate pulling the, the previous amendment. I'd like to leave the money in the district. I think it very much deserves it. But I'd like to, in, in order to give the assembly member and staff more, I guess, room to adjust and possibly make a bigger impact on the entire stretch rather than just that 2.3 miles, I would like the attorney to help me adjust the, the title of it to do so.
Okay, I think, did the attorney, did you have some input?
Yeah, maybe we should take a short break and Assemblymember Young and Public Works Director and I can, manager sit down and talk maybe finance.
Okay, so we will go ahead and we'll come back at 7:35. Okay. Is there further discussion?
I don't know if we have a quorum sitting here, Madam Mayor.
Oh, what happened in D, she was there.
She's down there, she's on the other side of Mokie.
Oh, okay, I was going to say she was there. Okay, all right, thank you. All righty, so is there further amendments, further discussion?
Uh, with your permission, I'd like to move an amendment.
Okay, so amendment number, now do we do six, seven?
Yeah, it'd be amendment number seven, and I would like to amend, uh, the title from Burma Road Reconstruction, Ashire Avenue to More, Moore Road, and have it now read Burma Road Upgrades and Improvements. Next, I would like to amend the description to read improved Burma Road including drainage, signage, paving, widening, structural improvements, and realignment. Next, I would like to remove the length in the current description, and lastly, I would like to remove the table in the current description.
Remove what?
The table.
You're removing the length and table?
The length and table, yes ma'am.
Would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yep, what this does is it gives borough staff and their Assembly rep, um, it, it gives them more lean, not leniency, but it gives them the ability to work on any part of Burma Road that they want, to focus on the areas that are the most dangerous, that need the most work, maybe not make that 2.3 miles perfect, but maybe go work on 6, 8, 10 miles and make it really good. So the description gives them the ability to work on all of those different things, drainage, signage, paving, widening, structural improvements, and realignment. So it just, it, it really opens it up so they can go out there and make the road safe from one end to the other and, uh, but, you know, still get, uh, still get it done, so.
Okay, discussion on amendment number seven. Objection to amendment number seven. We see none, and amendment number seven has been, uh, passed. Further amendments or further discussion on the ordinance?
I have another amendment I would like to move.
Okay.
I'm going to find it here, I apologize. Yeah, got it, thanks. I got it, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, so I'll read the amendment and then I'll discuss the strategy. So I move to amend Ordinance 23 dash 077 to require a 50% match to the projects by amending the title of the ballot to read 50% match Borough Transportation Systems Bonds. Amending all costs by reducing the amount by 50% except the issuance costs. Amend the first paragraph of the ballot language to read this proposition authorizes the Matt Newskas to sit in the borough to build the transportation systems projects listed below and issue bonds in the amount of, I'll read that into the record in a minute because I want to get confirmation, um, or is this our, this is our correct amount here, Nick, 70? Sorry, I didn't, all right, that's okay.
So you want 50% number?
It, that's what you want in here, right? Yes, yep, yep.
50%.
Plus.
Okay, so 50% plus the issuance cost would be 38 million, 7,210. 38 million, 7,210 dollars.
38,007,210.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to reread this one. Amend the first paragraph of the ballot to read this proposition authorizes the Matt Newskas to sit in a borough to build the transportation systems projects listed below and issue bonds in the amount of 38 million, 7,210 dollars, which is 50% of the cost of the projects. Lastly, inserting the following language at the end of the ballot language. This is the amount of the borough's bond contribution for the above projects. Bonds may not be issued to pay costs of a project unless matching funds of 50% for that project are received from sources other than the bonds. And if I may, I'd like to speak to my strategy.
Go ahead.
So, sorry, tip 21, um, those roads were, those were, I mean, some of those were dire emergencies, you could, you know, and, um, I was comfortable moving forward with that as it was, um, because we were, we had a, we had a lot of money and funds here too that I knew that we could use for that. We, as soon as the election was over and it passed, um, Mike and I met and I let him know that I would really like to move forward in a way and figure out a way to get it done without actually borrowing the money and putting it on the backs of the taxpayers. I wanted to see the state of Alaska participate in this project, and I wanted to see us deploy some money that I felt like should be deployed. We did that, it worked great. Um, right now, I don't, I don't think this is going to cause us any delays, this, the cost of, or I should say, oil's trading for approximately 10% higher right now than our budget, uh, than is needed to fund the Alaska State Budget. I know that can change, uh, the governor just vetoed a little over 300 million dollars. They've got a great start on capital projects money for next year anyways. This will give our three senators and six state reps, um, some leverage down in Juneau. Um, I do firmly believe, I mean, you, you never see, it almost never happens where they're bringing capital improvement money back in an off-cycle year, and, you know, they, we still got 5 million dollars this year out here to improve the length of the Wasilla Airport. There's, it was looking like there should be quite a bit of money next year for capital projects, um, and this would give our representative something to go and use as leverage to have, try to get us some money. So absolute worst case is, um, if they were not able to, we could put this back on next year for the full package, which is a high voter turnout next year. I, this is going to be a low voter turnout, there's no state or federal elections, and I don't feel comfortable sticking 75 million dollars on there on a low voter turnout year where we're the only ones that's going to be paying for it. So, you know, the, the borough's been about 75 to 78% of the growth for the entire state the last 12, 13 years annually, worth, worth three quarters of the growth for the state of Alaska. The state needs to participate, and, uh, and I believe they want to. We have great representation down there right now. Uh, they brought us home 30 million dollars for tip 21, um, and, uh, and the state's in a great place right now. I would argue the state's in a better place now than when they gave us 30 million dollars for tip 21. So, uh, Stephanie and I were both down there this spring, uh, fighting hard to get some road money. I knew it was a long shot in an, in a non-election year. Most of the, uh, most of the representatives want to save those gifts for their election years to help them get re-elected, and that's what this next season is. It's, uh, it's 2024, it's an election year, and I think it'll be the season of giving, so I would like to, I would like to see us require the match. If we, um, if we don't get it, then we can reevaluate next year in a high voter turnout year and look at putting the whole thing on there. So that's my reasoning, so.
Further discussion on amendment number eight? Yes, Assembly person, I keep.
I like the amendment, I think it has a much better chance of passing with the voters, but, but my, I not really experienced with this stuff. Where does this other money come from? Because, because it, they won't be done if we don't have the matching funds, right?
Correct. We, we could look at putting it back on next year where we took a swing at doing the entire thing on our own if we got no matching funds, but the money could come from the state, it could come from federal, it can come from, I mean, Nick could speak to that better than me, but it could come from anywhere, really, it just is so long as it doesn't come from the Matsu Borough.
Yeah.
So it typically, I would say, would come from state or federal money, so.
Mr.
And the way it's written, it's broad enough that it doesn't need to come from, like, when you think of federal government, you think of DOT, you think of, you know, maybe Fish Passage, transportation projects, things like that, but if you recall, we got, you know, some of the, um, some of the ARPA money was opened up to any general, any governmental expense, so this would allow that type of money if that happens again in the future. So it's written really broadly that it's any other source.
And, and I did that on purpose so that we wouldn't have to, if we got some money from somewhere, I didn't want to make it so it just had to be the state of Alaska, for example. I mean, this, this gives us an opportunity to, um, well, we've already amended our legislative priorities. This, the state knows how important roads are to us, but now this gives something that our representatives and senators can take back next year in an election year, coming off of over 300 million dollars in, uh, vetoes by the governor. They got a good start on capital projects next year, and they can say, look, our voters pass this overwhelmingly. I do believe this will pass overwhelmingly with a 50% match. We're three quarters of the growth in the state of Alaska, and we would like to see the state participate. I believe it'll happen. If not, then 12 months from today, we can sit here and talk about putting the whole thing on next year. But that's my thinking, so, and, and I will tell you, we can get started too sooner. We have money, Mike and I have talked, we have some stuff. If this passes in November, um, you know, the state budget, they won't be done until late spring, right? So if this passes in November, then we can start looking at right away acquisition and some little things on, on some projects, some design, whatever it may be. We do have some money to start, so.
Further discussion on amendment, Assemblyperson Nowers?
Thank you. Um, through the mayor, just a question, remind me, we have done the 50% match before. Um, I'm trying to remember the details, like a 2016 deal and, and it hung, like, all those projects didn't get done for quite a long time. Can you help me on the details of that?
Uh, through the mayor to Ms. Nowers, I'll do my best, and somebody can correct me if I missed up. I think we did it in 16 and 18. Uh, 16, one project was matched, thank you Senator Stoltz. Um, he bailed us out, that was on the Kneckneck Mud Shack Clay Chapman Road Upgrades for Reddington. The other pack, those other projects didn't move forward. 2018, similar outcomes, but four of those projects have moved forward as community transportation program, so that's where we went and found federal dollars to match them so we can move them forward. So what happens if those projects don't get done is we bring them forward for a future proposition more times than not, and we try to find another vehicle to get there. So, um, yes, it's correct to say that there have been a couple of packages where 50% match was required, and those packages did not get, did not get fully accomplished. Uh, we have brought select projects forward, um, and I mean, so I think the way this, I understand this, although we would have, we have some federal match money set up in a project account, Cheyenne kind of talked about, uh, one example where we put a little bit more funding into that, but as I understand it, even though we would have that available, we probably wouldn't, with this requirement on the ballot, um, we would need to wait for the state to make a determination at the end of session and the governor sign a bill before we'd be able to move forward, right? Because we can't commit funds until we know we have the match. So it would delay it in that sense, um, but we have been preparing for, because, you know, we have several grant applications out there. We have forced C, or two CTP nominations, two TAP nominations, so we already have stuff in the queue that may come in and require non-federal match funding, so we've been preparing for that. Um, but it would, it would delay it for the time that it takes for the state to pass a budget, assuming that we had the 50% in there. And then I think what Mr. Yount's suggesting is, doesn't work out, we'll be sitting here in August of next year, looking at the same package with no match.
So can I follow up on that? Because I, I'm interested in hearing response. So, um, that was my memory of when we did tip 21, one of the reasons we didn't do a match is because we had this history of projects that we, the voters had approved, and we weren't able to move forward on. And I guess my major concern is, we know we're behind on these roads, so anything that potentially slows that down is a concern, and, um, while I appreciate the, the optimism about the capital budget, I can't be as confident in that. I mean, oil is just as volatile as it gets, and it only takes a dollar to, to move the needle like 100 million for the state, you know? I don't know if I have that exactly right, but it, it's not very much, um, and it wasn't very long. very much. Um, and it wasn't very long ago that oil was in the tank, and the state was looking at slashing, so I don't have confidence in the oil prices. I also know that the utilities are looking at importing natural gas, cause MEA's contract's up in two thousand twenty-eight, and Hill Corp has told them that they're not gonna supply them with more gas. So the utilities are desperately looking for a solution not very far in the future. They're talking about a six hundred million dollar uh, natural gas terminal, and they're talking about a billion in upgrades in transmission, and this is to, you know, try to keep our, our, um, energy prices low. So I, I just see, like, even if the state has money, there's gonna be a lot of demands on that funding. So, and I guess, lastly, I guess I just don't, you know, fifty percent match, does that really sell our case to legislators in Fairbanks and Anchorage? Um, I just don't wanna see us hamstrung. Um, and it seems like the history with the fifty percent match before is it, it hamstrung us, and I'd rather just have it pass and, um, you know, we still go down to Juneau and work together to, to ask for the funding. That's been successful, um, based on our, like you said, seventy-five percent of the growth is, has been out here. So, um, I, I don't know, I can support this, because I just, I don't wanna, like, delay a year and have to come back to the, the voters. But I think we can go down there and lobby like heck and make our case.
Those are all great points. I, I agree, it could hamstring us. Um, I, I will note that in sixteen and eighteen, those packages were put forth with fifty percent match requirements after oil had tanked for a long extended period of time. Oil prices started dipping pretty heavily in two thousand and fourteen. Oil is volatile, but it, it doesn't swing up and down weekly or daily usually, I mean, by huge amounts, um, minus obviously COVID. It dropped substantially during COVID for a very short amount of time. But anyway, I guess what I'm saying is, we were running major state deficits at those times. And, uh, oil prices were very low. They dropped a few years even before the package was put out there the first time. So anyway, I, I don't think this is gonna hamstring us. I, I think it, we owe it to our voters to at least try, to say that we did try to get thirty-seven million, or maybe they only give us twenty million, and we do the first part of the package. If we do that, I would, I would like to note that if we only do part of the project at first, or the state or feds only give us a twenty million, and we do twenty million, that maybe Burma, because they're gonna have that other path, maybe Burma, uh, doesn't, isn't like the first project right out of the gate. But anyway, uh, I think we owe it to, I think we owe it to the voters to try. So, and then, uh, you know, this is a large ask. This is seventy-five million dollars. Cheyenne, could you please let me know what seventy-five million dollars would do if we bonded the entire amount ourselves? What would that do per hundred thousand dollars of value on a home? Or say, even if you wanna use the average home of three hundred and eighty grand or whatever it is right now, I can't remember what that would do. And you're, these are, this would be twenty-year bonds, would they not? Yeah, so we're, whatever this number is that she comes back with, it's a twenty-year bond. I would like to take a swing for the fences here. The state just gave us thirty million a few years ago, and I think they're in a way better position today than they were then. So this, this gives our, we have great senators and amazing reps out here. This gives them something to swing for the fences on, and if we have to reevaluate next August, we can, but right now I feel like we owe it to our voters to at least try. And Cheyenne, I, I would love to hear the number, but, yeah. It doesn't have to be now, though. So it can be whenever you're ready.
Further discussion? Assemblyperson Nowers?
I would just say again, I think it, it potentially hamstrings us, and, and oil prices don't have to change very much to have a significant impact on the budget. We saw that this year when the permanent fund shrunk and the, the state, um, education funding shrunk, because the oil prices didn't stay where they had hoped they would stay. So, again, I don't have those numbers at my fingertips, but a, a buck is a hu, a buck drop in gas is a hu, on oil is a huge deficit in the, the state. So I just, I'd love to, I'd love to support, you know, less impact on the, the property owners, but I don't wanna see us have to wait to get these road projects done. And, um, and I think we can, we can go down and lobby for thirty million in road projects, plus forty million for the, the PMRE.
Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, I just would like to note that even, I think even if oil had been at a hundred million, or a hundred dollars a barrel, that, uh, the governor was gonna veto a substantial amount of school funding, because, because the, all the different districts in the state are sitting on, I think approximately three hundred million dollars in unspent COVID funds. So, I think the school district funding was gonna get cut no matter what, because of the unspent COVID money. He wants to see that spent before. Anyway, yeah. I, I do appreciate the feedback. It, it's, it's all great feedback. It's just, like I said, I just, this gives our representatives and our senators something to work with, so, and hopefully we can save the taxpayers a bunch of money.
Further discussion on the amendment? Is there objection to the amendment? Okay, there is objection. Madam Clerk?
The members in the room can go ahead and vote on the amendment. Assemblymember Bernier.
Will you repeat the, uh, the motion there? The amendment, pardon me?
It's a pretty dong and long one, but I will read it. Amending the title of the ballot to read fifty percent match Borough, I'm sorry?
Good.
What's the gist of it?
Okay.
Transportation bonds? If the, if you just want the gist, gist of it, it's fifty percent match Borough Transportation System Bonds instead of a hundred percent.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
What is your vote on the amendment? Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, it is passed with Assemblymember Nowers opposed.
Okay. Is there further amendments, or are we ready to vote on the main motion? Yes.
Thank you, Rob.
I'd like to amend ordinance twenty-three zero seven seven by following prod, uh, project to the project list, Big Lake boat launch access and parking lot reconstruction for three hundred twenty-two thousand. And if I briefly can speak, I asked uh, during a break, uh, Mr. Adams, and he said there was a, uh, the boat launch, the actual launch was improved, but then, uh, the parking is still needs to have that improvement, and, uh, maybe, uh, Mr. Adams can fill us in, and we'll.
Okay, do, is the, um, Assemblyperson, is that that one, one that was on the alternate list, and if so, oh, we wanna be sure the clerk gets it correctly?
Yes, it was. It's on the page twelve. Road series, what, tip twenty, what, what number are we looking for?
Uh, this is amendment number nine.
Yes. But I'm saying, what, what else, what other description I need to give you?
I'm not sure the clerk has, we got it, so I, we wanna be sure that she has the correct wording, sir.
It's on page twelve of.
So can you see it up there?
And, Ms. Adams, if you could.
Yes, I can.
I would appreciate it.
I got it.
Okay.
Through the mayor, Assemblymember Conoff. So yes, this Big Lake Boat Launch Access and Parking Lot Reconstruction. So the actual ramp component was improved by community development, uh, several years ago. This project here, um, seeks to expand the parking area, and in fact, uh, they did procure design services and have a design for the expansion of the parking. Uh, the cost of the project exceeded their available funding, and so they decided to take what funding they did have and reappropriate it to another purpose. Uh, however, they do have a desire, and this is their nomination, to seek funding to enable them to expand the parking area.
Okay, you have further comments?
It's just when we're talking about millions on the other side, but this one actually, you know, our community will probably benefit. Uh, on a sunny day, if you go to any of the boat, the launching areas and the parking lots, they're usually very, very full, and this will give a benefit, and I think it'd be a fairly the, I would say reasonable number to make that improvement.
Madam Mayor, I just wanna note that it's gonna be fifty percent of the three hundred and twenty-two thousand.
I'm gonna have to move a new amendment if this passes, I think.
So it'd be a hundred and sixty-one thousand, not three hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Okay. Further discussion on amendment number nine?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
I, I know this is definitely needed, and I'm, I'm sure it is. There's a lot of great projects, like, uh, you know, like Tom said earlier, close to half a billion dollars worth of great projects, but this is not really a road project. This is, um, wants and needs, right? Wants and needs. So I'd like to get the opinion of the Assemblymember in that district and see if, you know, when we put this out there to the voters and they're reading through it, and they're seeing all of these great road improvements that are gonna make hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of people's lives a lot, say, most of them, thousands of people's lives a lot better and safer. It, uh, this one just doesn't really fit that to me. And I'm not knocking Big Lake, I'm not knocking their district or anything like that. This is more of a a want than a need. And so I, I would, I would like to ask the representative out there if this is something that he really wants to see on that bond thing, or if this is maybe something that we should try to get done someday when we can afford the wants and not just the needs, but.
Assemblyperson two, go ahead.
Well, I think since you put me on the spot, Rob, thanks. I appreciate that. And, and, and I'd like to lose all my votes in Big Lake right now. Huh? Thanks, Rob. But I, I, I guess, you know, that does sound like a, a thing that would be beneficial to the Big Lake community, because that does get full down there. And they did recognize that it needed to be repaired in the past, but then they didn't have enough money to fix it. And if we're gonna get half the money to do it, and it, it sounds reasonable to me, too. You know, I think, what'd you say, a hundred and some thousand?
Sixty-one.
Yeah, so it seems very, yeah. If you'll, I'll go yes. I plan on getting some yes votes, too, Rob.
I, yeah, I apologize. That was kind of a rough one for me to do there. That, that did definitely put you on the spot. But I guess, I don't know, for me, it's just, you know, these are all great amendments, and this one as well, but to me, this kind of fits the more of a, more of a want than a need, and, and it, it'd probably make people's lives easier out there, but we, you know, we don't even have, the city of Wasilla took away the boat launch on the city of Wasilla, the entire lake sadly enough, years ago. We don't have a boat launch at all, so I, yeah, it, uh, I, I unfortunately, I won't be able to support this one, but if it passes, I'm okay with it, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Hey, Rob? You guys could probably go launch in Big Lake, spend your money in Big Lake.
That's an idea, too.
I'm, I just wanna ask the attorney, because it says it's public roads, pathways, and facilities. So would this come under facilities?
Yes, so, um, earlier on in the ordinance, if I may, have one moment. So if you look under section three of the ordinance, uh, when we write these ordinances, I, I write them pretty broad. It's not only the construction betterments, improvements, and repair and reconstruction or acquisition for public facilities of the borough's transportation systems. Uh, the ordinance reads, "Such activities also contribute to the borough's powers to provide education, recreation, and economic development."
Okay.
Because those are other powers that we have, and under the law, you can combine different powers on the same bond issuance, as long as you have the power to do it.
Okay.
And again, as long as there's a usable capital project at the end. So.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would fit, because it, it's how we can do separated pathways as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Further discussion on amendment number nine? Any objection to amendment number nine? Yes, we have an objection.
Can I get the members in the room? Go, go ahead and vote. Assemblymember Bernier.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, it is passed with Assemblymember Nowers and Yount opposed.
Okay. Is there, so we're back to the main motion, which is ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven seven is amended. Deputy Mayor?
I, uh, I'm afraid I'm gonna have to change my fifty percent match number. Do I need to read the entire thing into the record again? Or just that paragraph?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just so the, the assembly and, and everybody knows, we will change those amounts, and we will be running them through finance. We know they've changed, because we've now added a project.
Thank you.
We will make sure Cheyenne checks our numbers.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Any further amendments? Any further discussion on ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven seven is amended? Is there any objection to ordinance?
I just had one, one comment. I, I looked it up. A dollar change in oil is seventy million dollars, so it takes five-dollar change in oil to wipe out three hundred million in a capital budget.
Is there objection to ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven seven, passing as amended? Okay, hearing, seeing no objection, then the legislation passes. The next item on the agenda is audience participation. Anyone is welcome to address the assembly on any topic for three minutes, and I do have a sign-up sheet, so I will, call those names first, and then, but even if you didn't sign up, you can still come and testify. So, Larry McIntosh, is that? Yes, come forth. It's, you'll be done there fiddling, and so, in a minute.
And Mr. McIntosh, if I can get you to hit the button on the mic when you come up. Then you can just leave it on. Perfect, thank you.
Can you hear me?
And state your name, and then.
My name's Larry McIntosh. I am a Matsu taxpayer. And I live in the Shrock Lucille area. My concern is, uh, speeders in the neighborhood I live in, in the Wilmington area. I believe it's represented by District Six. This has been ongoing since I moved there about, almost going on five years ago. Wilmington is basically a straight road that's about a quarter mile long, almost the length of a actual drag strip. We get speeders there day in and day out. Uh, I've been pushing to try to get speed humps installed for four years. I even have letters here, copies I have written to the borough. I have a three-year-old son and a wife that I'm very concerned about. And, um, last year, twenty-five mile an hour, additional, I think, three twenty-five mile an hour signs were installed on Dartmoor, Canterbury, and Preston. And, uh, even though the signs were installed, it still doesn't stop the problem. Uh, last week, I had an incident, whereas I was riding with my son on a bicycle around the block, and on Wilmington, I was stopped at Canter, Camber Court in Wilmington, talking to a neighbor. He happened to be eighty years old. And while we're talking to him, uh, an oncoming truck, F-150 coming by at approximately forty miles an hour. The neighbor motioned him to slow down. Instead, he speeded up and crossed over and aimed that truck right for us. Came within four feet of us, and, uh, that disturbed me. Uh, I, after I went home, I went looking for him. I couldn't find him. But I have located the truck. He is in the neighborhood. Again, I asked the borough to, uh, install speed humps. We have speed humps from the city of Houston all the way into Palmer, and I think this is the resolution that needs to be done. The, I called the troopers a few months ago. They're short-staffed. They don't have the resources really to monitor this or to post a radar trailer there or whatever. They just don't have it. And, um, counters were recently installed, uh, a week ago on Dartmoor Street, Canterbury, and Preston, but I don't understand why. Canterbury, and Preston. But I don't understand why they weren't installed on Wilmington. Even on the street I live on, on Dartmoor, there is a serious speeding problem, even with kids on ATVs. This, to me, is a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jackie?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of Assembly. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you again. I want you to know that, um, I am still talking about the books that are in the library, and I am still focusing on the one called Let's Talk About It. Now, the, the handout I just gave you, the opening page, is the answer that has been given to anyone who approaches the practicing recreation person, uh, talking about this book. And it says right there, "This book does not violate any obscenity laws, local, state, or national. While testimony was given that it is in violation, it is not. And I provided documentation to the committee and the patron regarding the obscenity claim. The patron consistently refuses to accept the legal test of how obscenity is defined." Now, unfortunately, all that I get is a copy of the law. That is all that I get. It's a copy of the law. Not once has it ever addressed any of the things I have brought out. Now, I want you to see the next page over. This is page eleven of this book. What those teens are doing is playing a game of spin the bottle. If you turn to the next page, you see the rules. The rules for spin the bottle is, remember while you're there, respect each other's boundaries, only do what you're comfortable with, and whatever happens stays between the two of you. Now, what you failed to see, because it's so hidden, is turn the next page. Pedophilia. That is an adult male. That's the two that just came out of the closet. This book has so much hidden stuff in it that you don't notice it. Go back to the first page. You didn't really see it, did you? Coming out of the closet there, okay, you two, time's up, is a young male and an adult male. Next page. They're talking about things in the closet that are sexual, that teenagers supposedly engage in or are just use, just of no, uh, particular, uh, importance. Now, we already know that they have no value in parents, especially fathers, because they even say F-U-C-K patriarchy in this book. So as you see in there, he's telling, he's giving a list, mutual masturbation, embracing, foreplay, rimming. Does anyone know what rimming is? Well, let's change the page and see, shall we? Well, they really have a problem with the anus, too, by the way. Now, I had a OBGYN go through this with me to find out the legal definitions. And I want you to know, she absolutely agrees with me on everything. The, the anus is not the entrance to anything. It's the exit. It's the exit, people. This is how this book is trying to push this at people, push this at children. It's an entrance for things. Turn the page. There you get rimming. You ready? The term refers to anal foreplay. With the tongue is specifically licking, penetrating, sucking, kissing, or otherwise orally stimulating your partner's anus. Okay? That's what it is. Now, if you go two pages over, you're going to find out all the terrible things that can actually happen to you when you do this. One of them is bacterial infections, and one of them's E. coli. E. coli will kill people. This book is obscene in absolutely any version of the word. And I will not stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Madam Mayor and members of the Assembly, I'm, I'm here because I, I found out about what Jackie found out, and that, that is these books. I mean, I've already spoken with you a little bit. But our Alaska law states that a person commits the crime of distribution of indecent material to minors if the person, being eighteen years of age or older, intentionally distributes or possesses with intent to distribute any material described in two or three subsections of this. So, two, the person knows that the material depicts the following actual or simulated contact. The person knows. Now, this is, this is a point because I've spoken with Zane in Wassila, who's the librarian there, and Julie in Sutton, who's the librarian there. And the book that I brought to Zane that I'm challenging is called Identical, which is about, um, in detail, a father molesting his nine-year-old identical twin girl, just one of them. But it goes into detail, filthy, horrible detail. And, uh, he had, he didn't know about it, neither did the youth, uh, person in charge. They, they didn't know about this book. They don't know what's in it. So when we challenge these books, they have to read it so they can no longer say they didn't know what was in it. So Julie said she didn't read the one I'm challenging either, same author. It's called Tricks. Guess what Tricks is, folks? You got it. It's five teenage prostitutes, and you wouldn't believe the things that are in that book. Well, she also hadn't read it. She's been there ten years. That book's been in there fourteen years. How come, w, w, we were asleep at the wheel, folks. We're asleep at the wheel. We have got to do something about this. And also, the committee, this is a classy felony, okay? It is. The committee that decides whether or not these books stay needs to be moral people, not the librarian, sorry. But they, I see what they do. No, we're gonna keep them right where they are, is what, what meeting I attended. We didn't get to speak, and they said, no, we, it's good. They're just gonna stay there. So we need people in the community that will use their moral values, which most people should have, I would think, to pick the books out, too. We need a good group of people, a committee, that will choose the books. Because these people, there's filth in there. There's pornography in our libraries. They are not safe spaces. They are not safe for children. I wonder if those computers are. I meant to call and say, hey, do you have blocks for porn on these? Because I walked into the Wassila one, there must have been fifteen computers. They were just packed out. There wasn't one available. Like, why are these little, why are the young kids, twelve, thirteen-year-olds, on the computers there? I mean, maybe they were doing homework. But if they're not blocked, that's not good, is it? I'm gonna call and see if they are. But we have to keep porn out of the hands of our children if we can do that, you know? So we'll be here complaining and all of that. Sorry about that, but we have to do something. We do. Thank you.
Karen, would you state your name for the record, please?
Karen Lewis, L-E-W-Y-S.
Thank you. Okay, the next person is Jim Walker.
Madam Assemblymember, um, excuse me. Uh, my name's James Walker. Um, as Nick probably knows, most people call me Jim. And, um, a month ago, I sent this letter to you. I got responses from no one. It is, uh, somewhat disappointing. Uh, we have an issue at the animal control shelter. Uh, the, uh, borough people you, you control has, uh, imposed what I consider to be a completely outrageous, uh, waiver of liability, discriminatory against the people who volunteer their time to serve the borough at the animal control shelter. In the months since I've sent this letter, the rumors in the community and, is that so many of the volunteers have resigned or just quit participating because of this new policy, that there's not adequate people to care for the animals at the animal control shelter. The borough doesn't hire enough staff, and they rely on volunteers, and they've now scared off a lot of the volunteers. And, um, what the rumors are, is that now, when animals are dropped off at the, uh, animal control shelter, a substantial number of them are just executed because there's no one to, to socialize them so that they're ready for adoption out back into the community. And, uh, if that's true, and I don't know that it's true, I expect the borough manager hears more about it than I do. But, um, that's just wrong. I mean, there's no reason to have an animal control shelter if you're not going to be redistributing the animals. And, um, so what, you know, and, and again, the rumor in the community, uh, by community, I mean the people who used to volunteer at the animal control shelter, is that one of the employees is now referred to, uh, I don't know if to, to their face or not, but as Doctor Death, because that's what the employee does. It just kills animals. Um, it is time for this Assembly to decide. If you want volunteers to work at the animal control shelter, you need to come up with reasonable policies that respect the rights of the volunteers. This, this liability waiver is just egregious. People who walk into the shelter don't have to sign it. But the volunteers who are working there do, and that, that makes no sense. You can't limit the rights of your employees the way you want to limit the rights of your volunteers. It makes no sense. I'm, I'm asking you to look at this and seriously consider revising the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom Garnett? Tom? Okay. Kathy Kelly? David Kelly? Jean?
Hi, my name's Jean Holt, H-O-L-T. And I just would like to, uh, reference about the water body setbacks, or just water body. Um, yes, the, the Matsu Borough owes it to the residents of the valley. Um, we've had the setback in for fifty years, but we haven't had any grounds, uh, for a plan. And it's only right for the borough to put some teeth into this. Uh, it, I realized that we're gonna have a advisory board. Um, I believe that seven is not enough. I think you need more academic members. I like the idea of the Matsu Fish and Wildlife, um, and also the Matsu Savin Habitat Partnership. I don't know if there's really a need for a realtor. Um, and also, I just think that we need a lot more people on this committee. Uh, believe, uh, also the, about putting teeth into this, uh, the planning department, since it's been such a shortage over the years, um, with the planners or whoever's going to be in charge, uh, I think the borough needs to step up and put some money out and have a coordinator for the group. Um, I, because if you want to accomplish something in only this amount of time, six months, uh, so I do feel that the borough needs to hire because I don't know what you plan on, who you're pulling out of the planning department to do this. Um, because there's so many subjects. And, I think it's a, it's a need, not a want. And, um, you have people that pay big taxes on this lakefront properties and stuff, and they're, they're not getting it right, not the way the borough's handling it. And also for the residents, uh, for recreational purposes. So yes, uh, if you want, you need to put some money into this. And that's just the way it is. I know you don't want to bring up the idea of spending money, but this is a very important issue, and I, let's not just take it for granted to try to get this done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to address the Assembly on any topic? Okay. Caleb, do we have any? We do not have anybody online. Say, one last chance, then, for anybody that hasn't addressed the Assembly, that would like to address the Assembly on any topic. Okay, seeing no one, then we will move, close audience participation, and we will move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
AM twenty-three-zero-seven-seven, request to vacate approximately twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty square feet if east Edgerton Parks Road right-of-way lying west of North Russet Road, located in Section Thirty-two, Township Nineteen North, Range One West. AM twenty-three-zero-seven-eight, authorization to purchase from government computer sales in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, computer replacements under the National Association of State Procurement Officials Agreement. AM twenty-three-zero-seven-nine, awarded bid number twenty-four, twenty-four, four B to U.S. Ecology Alaska, LLC, for the contract amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars to provide household hazmat transportation and disposal services. AM twenty-three-eighty, awarded bid number twenty-four-fourteen-B to McKenna Brothers Paving, in a contract amount of six-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-sixty-four, sixty-four dollars and fifty cents, to pave the Moose Park subdivision in South Marina Circle and construct speed humps on the Copper Creek. AM twenty-three-zero-eight-one, awarded proposal number twenty-three-one-ten-P-two, I didn't read this word before we got here, Tischler bis, in the contract amount of one-hundred-and-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars for the land use fiscal analysis and comprehensive plan support. AM twenty-three-zero-eight-two, awarded contract number twenty-four-eleven-C to MCG Explore Design for the contract amount of three-hundred-and-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars to provide construction administration services for the Matsu Central School construction. AM twenty-three-zero-eight-four, awarded bid number twenty-three-one-eight-one-eight-B to FE, FE Contracting, in the contract amount of twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred, twenty-two million eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars to construct Matsu Central School. AM twenty-three-zero-eight-five, approval to extend final completion date of contract number twenty-one-one-one-one-four-two-P with Kenny Engineering for the design services for the Felton Street Extension Project. AM twenty-three-zero-eight-six, approval to extend the final completion date of contract number twenty-two-zero-nine-four-P with the Boote Company to November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, for the construction management services for the Felton Street Extension Project. And AM twenty-three-zero-eight-seven, approval to extend final completion date of contract number twenty-two-one-thirty-four-B to October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three with the Prus, with Prus Construction Company for Felton Street Extension Project.
And Deputy Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Is there any objection? Okay, hearing no objection. The consent agenda is approved. I think we had one item pulled, right, ma'am?
We did. AM twenty-three-zero-eight-three, awarded bid number twenty-four-twenty-four-C to Craig Taylor Equipment Company in a contract amount of one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and ninety-one cents to purchase a compact track loader. This was pulled by Assemblymember Two.
Assemblymember Two, do you want to move the AM and then address it?
Yeah, I move AM two-three-dash-zero-eight-three.
Okay, go ahead and discuss, please.
Okay, so what this is, is a skid steer loader, and it's for one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, and it's for the O and M Department. And they're gonna give their other, uh, loader up to the sewer department up in Chalkitna. And so what I would say is, I'm not in support of the O and M Department having a construction company. They, they, they went out just recently and did some construction work on twin papoose, eight of them out there, using dump trucks, excavators, and so on. This, this, the borough is the size of West Virginia. There's no way that the borough can have a construction company be profitable or economical to take care of this whole area. I think that we need to concentrate on the sixteen different contractors that we have out there. I think the borough needs to be more of a contract manager and, uh, put this work out to those folks that plow our roads, grade our roads, and do that kind of stuff, and not try to do it all in-house. So I seen that work go on, and I just think that I don't, I cannot support the O and M Department having their own construction company. So I'd like to pull it.
Okay. Discussion? Other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
I, um, I started the process to pull this during budget season this year, and I, I did pull one other piece of equipment and ended up leaving this one in. Um, I can honestly say I don't remember the exact reasoning why. I did ask for a staff report then, and I would like to ask for one now. I would like to echo Mr. Two's comments about, I, I don't think it would work out well for the taxpayers if the Matsu Borough were to become a contracting company. Um, private sector, uh, in every aspect of life can do jobs better and more fiscally responsible than your local government. So, um, I, I would like to ask for a staff report on this piece of equipment again, so that we can have our memories refreshed from budget season, because it's been a few months. we can have our memories refreshed from budget season because it's been a few months.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Through the Mayor, Assembly Member Yount and Assembly Member Twos. So this piece of equipment actually was included in our FY '24 capital budget. And the reason it's here for you tonight is because the purchase, the acquisition actually exceeds $100,000, so it requires assembly approval. The piece of equipment that we currently do have is beyond its useful life with respect to using it for the O&M functions. It is being repurposed for lesser uses out in the Talkeetna District to support our water and sewer utility. We're not trying to build a construction company. If we can do that with one piece of equipment, man, you know, me and my man, Mr. Brown here, are going to have a conversation, and maybe I'll take a different career going forward. I do believe that a borough the size of West Virginia, as you would say, I think it's my opinion, probably irresponsible for us not to have some form of equipment so that we can do smaller type projects that don't require us to contract them all the time. With respect to the Papoose Twins project as referenced, we did do that project, and we did it very well with our crews on hand. We did it much cheaper than we were going to be able to procure it with our RSA contractors. We're not intending to replace our contractors and their service to the borough, but there is a reason that we should have some trivial pieces of equipment to be able to perform some low maintenance projects with our O&M forces. So with that being said, like I said, this was previously approved by this assembly in our FY '24 capital budget, and this is for you tonight because the cost exceeds the $100,000 threshold.
Deputy Mayor? Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say something, sir?
I'll make it quick. So just a couple little things, and maybe this isn't a question that can be answered tonight, and it's okay if not, but I guess I would like to know how many pieces of equipment the O&M currently has that weigh more than 5,000 pounds? Any piece of equipment over 5,000 pounds, a list of that, and it doesn't need to be tonight, but I'd like to see that in the future. I imagine we did get that project done cheaper that day than any of our RSA contractors could do, but I would like to note that the cost of an FTE is approximately 125 grand a year. So I will say that it is substantially cheaper to use contractors from time to time when you need them than it is to employ an entire staff of construction workers that can go out and do work. So when I hear that there's eight people from the O&M Department that were out there working on that project, and I don't know that that number's accurate, but say there was eight, it's a million dollars a year, give or take, to provide them with the salary, wages, you know, health insurance, all those different things, paying the 401K matches. So FTEs are expensive. They're substantially more expensive in the long run than contractors. So my last question, or my question, I guess, would be that what's the intended use for this skid steer? How do they use this? What is it used on? What's the plan for it?
Go ahead, sir.
So through the Mayor, Assembly Member Yount. So I mean, you know what a skid steer is. It's got a variety of uses for it, so there is no necessarily a specific use, but it does allow our road maintenance technicians to perform, you know, some minor earthwork activities, perhaps, you know, work around the O&M yard, you know, moving heavy pieces of equipment around the yard itself. It's not always that we transport it out to the field for its use. It's actually used internally to do, you know, support services on site as well. So, you know, it's got a variety of uses. I couldn't sit here and tell you specifically exactly what it's going to be used for.
Mike, did you want to say something earlier?
Yeah, through the Mayor to the Assembly. I guess one thing I would remind the Assembly of too is, I want to first off echo, we're not trying to replace road service area contractors, and I'm not, you know, I'm not questioning, like, can they do it cheaper than the government and all that? Like, our model for providing road maintenance services is to contract it out. It's that simple. But having said that, there are services, functions, that are not within the scope of our RSA contracts that have been that way for years. One example is placing mud mats in the spring. A skid steer will help you place mud mats. Our RSA contractors don't do mud mats in their scope. I'm not saying they couldn't, but they don't currently. They don't do pavement repairs and things like that, so we have a very small crew that does some of that stuff. It's not to say that you couldn't adjust it over time, but it would have to be adjusted over time because our 16 RSA contracts come up for rebidding on different cycles, and it takes time to make those adjustments. I mean, to go out there and just say, I'm going to amend something into the scope of all of our contracts means you're not going to pay a competitive price for it because it's not in a competitive bid. So if we want to make adjustments, we can certainly talk about that, but what we're talking about here and some of the services that O&M currently provides that are related to road maintenance have been in place for years. So we're not talking about us making changes to the structure and who does what function. It's just recognizing that there are some functions we already do that are not included within the scope of road maintenance contracts. Now, having said that, O&M also is responsible for more than just road maintenance. We have 100 facilities that we have obligations to do certain things, whether it's parking lot stuff or even snow removal and different things that may come up here and there. So it's, O&M's not just road maintenance, and we have those other facilities and things, grounds that we have requirements for as well. So I just want to be clear, like, we're not intending to, this is not a scope creep deal where we're trying to add functions that O&M's trying to take over that are currently contracted out.
Okay, yes, Assemblyperson Two, go ahead.
You're right, you're not going to do it with just a skid steer, but you're going to do it with an excavator and a dump truck and compactors and this and that, and a bunch of other stuff, and it keeps adding up, adding up. Like I said, that job right there was a $2,500 job that a guy offered to do it for. Are you telling me that you paid less than 2,500? No. So I won't go on, but I'm not going to support it. I think that we should use our contractors, and I think that the O&M Department doesn't need to go out there and do that work.
Okay, further discussion? Yes, Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
I'm going to support this because I don't, I can't piecemeal. The objection that's being made is that we have too many, but you're basically saying we have too many pieces of equipment and we're doing stuff. Like, we haven't had that discussion. We approved this as part of the capital budget to bring it up on the fly and suddenly say we don't need this because the borough is going the wrong direction and doing something they shouldn't be doing. I would appreciate information coming back to this body that helps me be able to determine, you know, is that really true, rather than throwing out some information at the last minute and asking us to turn down a project we already approved? So I'm gonna say yes to this. I would appreciate if there is an issue with the borough having too many pieces of equipment that we actually have a discussion about that with some numbers and data in front of us so we can evaluate it fairly and not throwing out, you know, numbers that may or may not apply to this situation.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I too am going to support this, and I'll say why is, you know, I considered pulling this in the spring and didn't. We had a good conversation, Tom and I did, and he really felt like it should be in there. So I'm going to go with it because we did approve it during that, and I don't think it's right to pull it tonight. I do think it was good to have this discussion this evening. It was a very healthy discussion, and I would like to, there's no rush on it, you know, any time in the next few weeks or month or whatever, but if we could get a list of O&M equipment together, I'd be curious to see how many pieces they have that are over 5,000 pounds. I use that as kind of a threshold, even the tiniest of little mini excavators weigh more than that. So anything over 5,000 pounds, I know, is a pretty usable piece of equipment. So, but I agree with Ms. Nowers, it's something that we should make adjustments on the fly. I did not pull this during budget season. I pulled one other piece of equipment, left this one in there, and so I do think we should leave it, but it was a great discussion, and I think it'll lead to some, you know, some good stuff in the future. So, thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? Yes, Assemblyperson Two.
During budget time, I also left it in there. But now they went out and rebuilt a road, which they'd never done before, and so that's, that alerts me to this, this isn't just to go get mud mats. And they're building up of arsenal, they're having eight guys out there. I just, so that's what made me want to say stop. There it is.
Further discussion on the motion to, go ahead, sir?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
What is the reasoning for replacing this skid steer that they're going to give away to Talkeetna Sewer and Water?
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Through the Mayor to Assemblymember Bernier. So in the AM, it does suggest that the maintenance, the amount of maintenance that's being had on this particular piece of equipment is reaching the level that doesn't make it appropriate to continue its use for daily work. But if you're familiar with the Talkeetna Water and Sewer Utility, which the Matsu Borough owns and oversees and manages, there is a need for equipment as well out there for various functions, and so they have a lesser daily use requirement for that piece of equipment where, you know, it's acceptable to use this piece out there and turn over to our road maintenance crew that has a need, a higher need for this, a newer piece of equipment that doesn't, isn't plagued with maintenance issues.
Follow-up? Assemblyperson Bernier?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? And I think there is objection, correct? So...
The members in the room could go ahead and vote. Assemblymember Nowers, can I get you to press the button again? Assemblymember Bernier?
No.
Madam Mayor, it passed with Assemblymember Bernier and two opposed.
Okay. All righty, we do not have any unfinished business. There's no vetoes. And Madam Clerk, when you're ready for the introductions?
Introduction for public hearing on August 15th is ordinance 23071 with accompanying resolution 23078, ordinance 23078 with accompanying resolution 23087, and ordinance 23079.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for August 15, 2023.
Discussion? Any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection, then the legislation is introduced. Vacancy report, Deputy Mayor?
I move to confirm the mayor's recommendations as follows. Matsu Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission resignation of Mike Wood.
Any comments, discussion? That does create a vacancy on the Fish and Wildlife Committee, and we are currently recruiting and asking people for, if they are interested to complete an application, we do have one application, but we had to accept the resignation first for the vacancy to become an approved. So hearing no objection, and the vacancy report is approved. The next item is other new business, and we have a motion to rescind by Assemblyperson McKee around, go ahead, Madam Clerk, do you need to read it, Madam Clerk?
I would like to. Resolution 23041, a resolution authorizing the borough manager to solicit bids for the Long Lake Road salvaged timber harvest.
Going back to my old days at the city when I had to do all of that, I guess. I gladly, you do it now. Okay, the motion to rescind has been made and is on the floor. So discussion now. Yes, Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead, discussion.
Yeah, when I read all of the comments and listened to all the people from that area who are directly affected, I just thought that was, I was going to use the word no-brainer, but that's not fair. I just thought, what other choice do we have but to rescind? And when I read through the letters that were, that are attached, that we got with this, it's, nobody wants it. It's not remote. It seems to me that that's government overreach. They also talked about the fact that they didn't get notifications, so they couldn't gather in the numbers that they otherwise would have. Some of them couldn't make a timely objection to it, so, because they didn't get a timely notice. Others talked about devaluation of their property. Others bought property to look at this Abbey, is it Abbey Hill? I think it is, it was part of it. Everything that I read, if I were in that, if I lived in that area, I'd be head in the pack. If they say they don't want it, I don't think they get it. I think that the people should prevail here. I also, the idea that it went to one company, maybe I'm mistaken about this, but Popert was the only one that bid, or Popert was the only one that, and was it that Popert contacted the borough to ask about this? The other thing that it wasn't included in the original five-year plan is like, boom, let's just put it in there. So to me, there's just, I don't see any reason for it. If one of the reasons too was to say, well, we'll clear out the dead brush, I think they said something like 98% of that wasn't, wasn't spruce in any form particularly beetle killed. So as far as I can see, I feel that the people there need to make that decision, and I think their decision is based on an awful lot of evidence that certainly convinced me. So I think we should listen to the people.
Okay. Further discussion? Oh, yeah, Deputy Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
There was a lot of emotion with this, for good reason, but there was a lot of emotion in the room when this came forward. I do not think we should rehash any of it tonight. We have recently directed our manager to sell this property. So we, I hope that everybody votes in favor of the motion to rescind. This is good bookkeeping. I don't think we should have it out there if we're trying to sell the property, but I don't also think we should rehash any of the details and all the emotion. I think we should just vote to rescind, so.
Assemblyperson Nowers, did you have comments?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to put some comments on the record for the people who may wonder why I voted the way I did. I think my initial assessment was that residents reacted before an actual harvest was set. So the way the borough was going to do it was, we're going to do this area, then we're going to go look and see what actual areas we're going to do, and residents, I think there was some confusion about that. I don't think this was going to result in a clear cut, but I totally understand the concerns of the residents of an area they love and treasure and a change that would come. On the flip side, I would support the motion to rescind because we've just recently kicked off our timber industry in a new direction, and what I've seen in the past with the borough is I've seen the timber industry come to a complete halt because of one project gone wrong and people upset about it. And so I want to see that industry continue and these smaller sales going forward succeed. So I don't, you know, I think there's a lot of other places to timber. So there's a lot of opposition in this particular place. I think it could lead to, if we pushed it on people, it could lead to backlash against any sort of timber sale, and I don't want to see that. So I think, I want to say this because I want to see these sales succeed and done well and without opposition, and I think that will build the case for future sales and make people more comfortable. So I'm going to support the motion to rescind, but I just wanted to get on the record what I hope happens with timber industry here, and I think that's the borough working with the timber industry and with residents to make it work.
Further discussion? Is there objection to?
Mayor? I was just going to comment, that was well said, Stephanie. My sentiments exactly.
Assemblyperson Fana, go ahead.
Can I get a clerk to explain motion rescind and what does actually this means in this situation, please?
So the Assembly did pass this resolution. It's been quite some time. Assemblymember McKee moved to rescind it, basically meaning if you rescind it, the resolution is gone. It no longer has passed.
Any objections to the resolution being rescinded? Is there any objection? Okay, seeing and hearing none, and the resolution has been rescinded. We do not have any referrals. We do not have any reconsiderations. We're now to Mayor, Assembly, and Staff comments. Assemblyperson Fana, do you have comments, sir? Uh, we're now to Mayor, Assembly and Staff comments. Assemblyperson Fana, do you have comments, sir? Okay, Assemblyperson Nowers.
I do. I have a little bee in my bonnet about oil prices, so I have to give Assemblymember Yant a hard time when he says that oil prices don't change daily. So, um, I gotta look up the numbers because I'm a numbers person. So, July 2022, $100, uh, per barrel. August 2022, $94. September, $87. October, 89. December, 80. May, $66. And remember again, every dollar change is $70 million. So, counting on the state to come through for us when most of our budget comes from oil. Well, most of it comes from the permanent fund these days, but from oil. So, you know, and just between, I could go back on the annual average too, which is what this matters to the state. But I just have a bee in my bonnet about that. I think we need to be clear-eyed about the fact that we do not control oil prices and it controls a huge amount of our budget. So, we can't pretend that, um, that that isn't a huge risk factor for us as a state and as a borough when we're looking at trying to count on funding for projects here. Thanks, sorry, Rob.
Deputy Mayor, parting comments?
I was hoping I have some more time to do some homework. Um, that's all right. No, 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 it's okay. It, um, no, Ms. Nowers is correct. They definitely, they'll, they'll ebb and flow by three, five, eight percent here and there. But we are, current levels are higher than it takes for our state budget and they have been. You know, it's, it's a crapshoot, really ultimately at the end of the day. I know for a fact the state's still sitting on plenty of money to go into capital projects. Do we know what capital projects they're going to be? No, of course not. But I think this gives us, um, a good opportunity of going down there and fighting for our worth. And I believe Alaska's worth, I know this will never happen, but I believe our worth is 75% of all capital projects in the state. Or not 75, but 75% of future because that's what the growth is here. So, I know that won't happen, but we need to fight for it. So, um, moving on, um, there were some great comments earlier tonight or concerns, I, about speeding and different things. You know, the, the borough doesn't have area-wide police powers, nor do we want it. But I have seen used in the past those solar-powered, um, like speed limit signs. And man, they really get your attention, in my opinion. And I don't know what those cost and, but maybe that's something that we could have George look into or something and, and see. I talked to him about doing it on one street in my district close to a community park. We went another direction. We ended up using speed bumps and, and I think that's great. But, uh, those things are awesome and they really catch your attention because they tell you exactly how fast you're driving and as you're dropping. And from what I'm told is they're solar-powered. So, if maybe we could have, uh, um, you know, one of our staff look into that and get back to us on what that costs. Because I, I do think they work a lot better than, uh, a regular one. So, there were some good concerns in regards to the animal controls, control shelter. It, there, I, I don't honestly know their day-to-day operations very well down there. I know them from a budget standpoint. I know when I first got elected three years ago, I was pretty in shock at the size of their budget. It comes down to actually a decent amount of money for every person in the, in the community. I think their budget this year was around 2.7 or 2.8 million dollars. It's a sizable amount of money. We're a dog family. Um, you know, we're, we're, we love our pets. I've always, I've had pets since I was a kid. I mean, I'm not anti-animal in any way, but I think we need to tread lightly if we're looking at spending more money. So, um, because that is a massive budget for a community with only just over 100,000 people in it. So, um, and finally, the water body. Um, I really appreciate the comments earlier. I don't know what the size of the body will be or that task force, um, albeit or whatever. I believe it's going to be seven right now. I did, when I, when I went to Alex, our director in planning, and I said, hey, I'm, I'm really considering bringing forth and asking for, a working group. I don't want to rush this process. I want to get it right. And I think we, we stand to get it right and have a lot better chance of that if we create a working group. And he fully agreed. I did ask him, um, if he would take on being the person that is the coordinator of that. Um, and he said he absolutely did want to do that. I have a lot of faith in Alex. He's very committed to his job. The, I mean, Alex will text me at eight, nine, 10 o'clock on a weekend all the time with stuff that we're working on, work stuff, and I gotta remind him, I'm like, go, you know, you don't got to be working this late at night. So, Alex is very dedicated. I think he's great at what he does and I, I do believe he's going to play a very active role. I think he's going to be at every meeting and be involved in the whole thing. And so, um, and if it's not him, then maybe it could be someone else, as mentioned before, and we could spend the money to hire someone else. But I am comfortable if it is Alex. I don't think we should rush this process. I mean, this started last year with, um, you know, a, a seven zero vote here last May, I think, um, when I started this process. We're, you know, 14 months or whatever into it to get the process started and I'm in no rush. I just, I just don't want to leave behind the 674 homes that were within the 75 feet prior to the 1980s legislation. And so, that, that's my only intention here. That's how this started with me, was a gentleman in my district that, uh, built this house long before the 80s and, and is, uh, in a pickle, I guess you could say. So, anyways, I, I, I don't know how long that working group will work on it. Doesn't matter to me if it's three months, six months, if it takes two years. But I do have the utmost confidence in Alex to help direct it and I think he'll do a great job. So, just wanted to get that out there. So, thank you.
Madam Clerk, parting comment? Mr. Manager, parting comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, nine o'clock is way too early to get out. So, I have six points to make tonight. I'm just kidding. I do actually have six points, but I'll be quick. First of all, just to put it on the record, so I'll just say it, it's probably for the benefit of the assembly primarily, but maybe for staff. I am not interested in expanding the existing scope of operations and maintenance for road maintenance. I'll just say it. Check that one off. Number two, um, we are, we awarded the Matsu Central School, uh, construction project tonight. That's a big deal. You guys, we all worked on that for months. So, it's a great, great story. Uh, just so you understand, the school board tomorrow night will be meeting. They'll be talking about some of the additive alternates potentially that were not awarded in the contract tonight. Specifically, a multipurpose room, AKA a small gym, and a music room because they just exceeded the project budget and funding that we had set aside. So, the school board will be able to look at that. The district's going to work on the furnishings, fixture and equipment for the school. Just so the assembly's aware, and you'll see this in legislation in the future, we're looking at, um, other, other federal sources that we might glean some money from. But we are going to look to create, uh, a $1 million contingency. Right now, as it stands with contract award, we have about a $24,000 contingency for a $22 million construction project. So, you do the math. I'm, I'm just saying, I've never met a perfect design, so it seems unlikely that that will, that'll get us across the finish line. So, Cheyenne and I, and when I mean Cheyenne and I, I mean Cheyenne, is working on that. And we will have legislation in the future to create a contingency, not a free-for-all pot of money to spend on the school, but something that ensures that we deliver a great product for the community in a year and a half, two years from now. So, I just wanted to put that out there so that got communicated. So, if you hear anything about a school board discussion or there were questions around a contingency, how we're managing that, I think we've got a good plan moving forward. Just want you to be aware that behind the scenes, we'll be working on that and there'll be legislation, um, in the near future, number two. So, number three, uh, we, the speeding stuff, so whether it's speed humps or radar signs, I just kind of wanted to give you a quick sense of, and it's good for the public to understand this, like, we do take those on. Typically, what we do, and I'll look at George and Tom to correct me if I misspeak, but generally speaking, when we get those requests, because it can be a lot of requests, we typically ask those to be vetted through the RSA Board of Supervisors so that they can be aware of what those requests are and have input into that process instead of just taking every complaint and executing. Because that's not something we readily budget for. So, typically, we will ask the complainant or the public, person in the public resident to go to the RSA Board of Supervisors and kind of state their case, so that there's some vetting and conversation that occurs. So, um, typically, we handle that through that process. And then, if the RSA Board is, uh, amenable and there is budget, then public work staff will kind of work through that. So, I just kind of wanted to make the assembly, that's kind of how we navigate that process currently. It's not a hard and fast rule. That's just generally how we navigate it. Is that, did I get close, gentlemen? Okay, he, that was a sort of a north-south nod. We are also moving forward with the PMRE as a road discussion. We will be meeting with one of our state legislators in the House, who, that project is within his district, to have that conversation about why we're doing that and what we're looking for. The mayor, uh, and Mr. Yant will be in attendance at that meeting. And we will also be talking, uh, to the deputy commissioner at, uh, the Alaska Department of Transportation Thursday to have that conversation about potentially state assistance and what that may look like. So, we are going to continue to push and move that forward. As far as animal care, I just thought I'd throw this stat out there because I've heard this conversation about how much that budget is for managing the animal shelter and its operations. If you put that in a, because it's a non-area-wide account, it's about $19 per $100,000 in value. So, just so you have context of what that's costing the community, it's about $19 for every $100,000 in value. I just thought that was an interesting number. I asked Cheyenne to look that up for me because I too was curious. And then lastly, um, a special meeting next week. I was talking to one of our assembly members today about that because there's been some questions about what we think that might look like. So, I just want to give the assembly a quick sense of what you're going to walk into Tuesday. So, we invited all 20 active community councils to send a representative. Down here, you'll probably have two rows of tables on both sides that'll have microphones at them where the community councils will be seated so that they can engage in dialogue without having to run back and forth to the podium. We will also have a representative from the Alaska State Troopers to talk about the criminal component of junk and trash and derelict properties. Uh, a member from the Palmer DA's office and a member from the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation. So, if there's questions about like contamination and things like that, staff will be prepared to discuss code compliance cases, where we stand, what we're doing. The attorney will certainly be in a position to talk about injunctions and the limitations and challenges associated with that. And we'll provide a quick overview of what the assembly, uh, has been doing recently in terms of like the tow reimbursement, the Adopt a Road program and some of those other things to move forward. We titled it Community Cleanup, but in the conversation with an assembly member today, it's probably more appropriate to say what we're really going to be talking about is like derelict properties. So, it's a little bit of both. Uh, I don't know where the conversation will go. But it'll start the conversation about what else we can do. The community councils will have an opportunity to share their ideas and their concerns. And I wouldn't be surprised if you had some individual members from the public show up and complain about a very specific code compliance case. We'll be prepared to have that conversation and talk through it. That's what I expect Tuesday to look like. I have no idea where to land or where it goes, uh, but I think that's what the assembly wanted was a discussion. So, that's what I think we're set up for. I just wanted to give you some sense, uh, for what that may look like. And we'll put some written communications around this in tomorrow's weekly post. If you want to look for that, that's all I have.
Assemblyperson two, parting comments?
Madam Mayor, can I ask one question of the manager?
Sure.
Just a question, suggestion on our, our layout. If the tables can be angled a little bit, I just hate for the community council people to have to look like at each other down a straight line. I wish we could be off the dais, but just a, a comment suggestion to angle them a little bit so they, it's more of a discussion with the community. Thanks.
Any other comments to the manager's checkpoints? Assemblyperson two, parting comment? Assemblyperson McKee, parting comments?
Well, I'm, I'm delighted that the, uh, timber sale went away because that restores faith in government of the people. That's who we are. The gentleman that spoke about the speed bumps, I wish about six weeks ago, we would have had them on our street. I've lived there 30 years and we've had everything from cats, rabbits, dogs, horses, iguanas and grandchildren, uh, and, and my own sons on that, on, on my road. And thank you for letting me know where to go with that because our little 18-month-old, your, uh, Morkey was killed right in front of my eyes. As close to me as you are, closer actually, closest Mike maybe, and in front of my grandchildren, and that's devastating. So, um, it brings, almost brings me into tears, so I apologize for that, but it is very traumatic when that happens. So, it, it's worth it. Those, those solar-powered ones, they really make, who, who pays attention to the speed limit? Nobody. But you, when you see that thing clicking up like that, it, it makes you pay attention. And, uh, the thing with the, um, animal shelter, um, I'm a huge animal person and it would scare the living liver out of me to go and be and volunteer there after reading what you, the, the form that these people are asked to sign. I don't know how you, I don't know how you do that. How do you get anybody to work there? Unless they, unless they travel and, you know, get there in a full suit of armor or something, I don't know. Because you're going to get bit every once in a while, so I'm going to, and I didn't, I had not seen your letter. Had I, I would have called you. I, I don't know, it may have come and I didn't notice it because we get, you know, like huge stacks of paper. So, but I, I would like to contact you about that and see if I can do something. And that's it. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, parting comments? No, okay. Assemblyperson Bernier, are you still online, parting comments? Is he still online, Caleb? Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, parting comments, sir?
Yes, I wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I want to thank the Lord for all the blessings that he bestows on our borough and our state. Please bless all our families, keep us all safe. May we seek his will, do his will, and just love one another. In Jesus's name, amen.
My parting comments are, for those of you that didn't attend or were maybe not even aware of it, uh, today at the Wasilla Chamber, the Matsu Borough was the presenters and we had a number of our directors there as well as Mike and myself. And, uh, we've just presented on the things that are taking place in the borough. I heard many nice comments at the end. In fact, the MC said at the very end, wow, I didn't realize the borough did all of those things. So, anyway, a great job to our directors, um, that were there and putting that on. And, um, especially to our borough manager who organized it. So, with that, I will adjourn at 9:08.